Thank you so much for joining us today. We are really excited to be back on the West Side again at the State Fair Park. Welcome and thank you for joining us. Right now is a work session during which there is no public comment, but please join us during our 7:00 PM formal meeting to share your comments. And remember that tonight, since we are off-site, if you're listening, the public comments will be taken in-person only. So come on down here and join us in-person if you would like to give us comments. Of course, we always welcome your feedback anytime by mail to P O Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah 841145476, or by email at council comments at slc gov dot com, or via our 24-hour phone comment line 801-535-7654. Written comments we receive on agenda topics are shared with council members and posted to our website, slccouncil dot com. So now we'll begin our work session, and the first item on our agenda is updates from the administration. And I was just told this, Ashley Cleveland, Andrew Johnson, and Laura Briefer are going to be giving us brief updates today. And so we'll invite them to the table. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you so much for coming to the West Side, and it's a pleasure to be here with you. For our updates, we have, of course, we encourage all community members to continue to stay engaged with our slc.gov forward slash feedback site. It is regularly updated with highlighted ways to engage with the city overall. Right now, our Sustainability Department, in conjunction with the mayor's office, is talking about our electric landscaping equipment exchange. We have lawn care or landscaping businesses that are eligible in $3,000 credits. This will be available until through April 24th. From the council, we have our downtown building heights and street activation feedback. We also have council engagement beginning this month. For our Ballpark Next initiative, please visit ballparknext dot com. We have our internal review of applications that are underway, and end-of-May celebration is getting planned now. For our Public Lands Department, we are continuing engagement around Glendale Regional Park. Phase 1A construction plan development is underway, and we are discussing new amenities anticipated to open summer 2024. We also have Miller Park. We have a survey that has closed and is currently being analyzed. In May, we will have results available. From our Sustainability Department, again, we have our electric landscaping equipment exchange. Once again, there's $3,000 in credits available for lawn care or landscaping businesses, and this feedback is available from now until April 24th. From our Community Outreach Team, we are keeping it rolling with our community office hours. Our last two engagements will be at Roja Brewing Project on April 25th from 12 p.m. We also have some community hours available at day library at 6:00 from 4 to 6:00 p.m. Additionally, our Community Outreach Team are quarterly council meetings to meet chairs and co-chairs. We have our Native American meetings, and we also Proclamation Plus events that'll be happening this May.
You can see the updates from this week. Down in the utilization of overflow and resource center beds, that's to be anticipated, obviously, with the ramp down this springtime. We do know that this is the last week of operation for the Mill Creek facility, and a lot of those staff are actually going to be moving over to the new housing project here on North Temple Fair Park Point, which should open this week. The Rapid Intervention and Cabin Impact Mitigation work continues. You can see the plan is for this week, 300 South, 600 West, and then next week, through the flood season, the Jordan River, Folsom Trails, those places along waterways. Increase in the number of Hart Tract camps, that's probably up from the mid last two weeks. A lot more folks starting to camp outside and see the other locations. We also had a resource fair at Pioneer Park last week, and many contributors, but some new ones as well, Amazon Wasatch Community Gardens Employment Program, the Food Justice Coalition, River Rock Apartments, which some of you may be aware of, downtown resources, and the council member, I don't believe she's here yet. Special thank you to her and the council, the Clothing Drive, very much appreciated. And then Kayak Court will start up in May, weather pending. Any questions from council?
Councilmembers, any questions for Ashley or Andrew? Doesn't look like it, thank you. And I think we're getting a briefing from Laura Briefer from Public Utilities about flooding.
Yes, a briefing about 2023 spring runoff. Before I start, first of all, I just wanted to thank all of the council members and staff who have lent so much amazing support over the last few days, whether it's getting out there, sandbagging. I saw a number of you out there on 1700 South last week, text messages, emails, thank yous to my crews. So we really appreciate your help and participation in this. Also, we have a lot of help across the city. Public Utilities is leading on this, but we are leading in collaboration with Salt Lake County Flood Control and pretty much every single city department. It's just been a great collaboration overall. So just in general, we continue to monitor weather, snowpack, snowwater equivalent, and projected runoff. We're coordinating meteorologists and meteorologists to review that and perform field assessment of our watershed. These assessments really guide our decision-making regarding operations and resource allocation. And I'm in great detail on every single stream system. There's a lot of work happening even as we speak in preparing for runoff in City Creek, which has not yet made its peak, Red Butte Creek, which also got its runoff peak, and Parley's Creek. So quite a lot of operational activities to prepare. Sandbag supplies are robust, given the volunteer events that were held this weekend. The greater community for coming out to those events, it was wonderful to see. We estimate about 30,000 sandbags were filled, and those were picked up today by Public Utilities for staging. Also want to thank Delta Airlines, who had some of their crews work over their lunch break to fill about 1,400 sandbags and deliver them to a location along Red Butte Creek for staging. Weather right now looks kind of good and ideal for a measured runoff, which is what we want. So we had a little bit of warm-up the last couple of days, and now, as we all saw, as it was hailing on us when we walked over here, we have a little cool-down, a little more active, cooler weather pattern, with some warming starting again next week. We're continuing to monitor stream flows on all the streams. I have my stream flow gauges on my phone that I look at a lot. Anyway, if there are any questions, please, please let me know. That's kind of a brief overview.
Councilmember Dugan, and then councilmember Pui.
I just want to say thank you, Laura, for your team and the flood control team, and also all the residents that came out Wednesday night. It was an impressive show, and it really just warms your heart that everyone came out to fight and combat the flooding there on 17 South down the 15th East. Tremendous job across the board, and just a shout-out to everyone for their help and support. So thank you very much from District 6.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, councilmember.
Thanks, Councilmember Pui.
So thank you for putting together all those events and the administration pushing those on social media. We had a great show here on the West Side too, with dozens and dozens of volunteers. I helped for a little while, and I was very impressed with the community showing off. My question relates to how it was decided how much sand to put in any location? It seems like there was a lot more. And it may be for a reason, right? There's more, you know, there's a lot of creeks and a lot of runoff already happening on the east side. Do we have worst-case scenario plans for the West Side? Obviously, across the city, right? But, you know, for what it matters to me, with what I hear a lot from the neighbors is, do we have worst-case scenario, and where could people ask for sandbags? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That reminds me to think also, gosh, now I'm forgetting the name of the gravel company that donated sand. I will remember that. But anyway, we received enough sand last week from them to fill, we hope to fill 48,000 sandbags, and so we have some bags left over, but we need more sand. All of those filled bags are going to be staged at centralized locations for Public Utilities deployment, where it's needed, and we're already starting to deploy them to different areas. Along the West Side, the largest concern would be the Jordan River, and so we've been monitoring the flows of the Jordan River regularly. There are capacity in the system right now, and especially because we have the surplus to divert most of those flows, as well as the upstream in Utah Lake and downstream in Great State. So really, we're looking at pinch points further upstream from the Jordan River, where the streams go underground into pipes, because the pipes just naturally constrict the flow of the streams. And that's really along 1300 South, 900 South, and North Temple. We'll sometimes see, if the water charge will sometimes, the lids pop off of the storm drains. And so we are staging various, either sandbags or other equipment in those areas to mitigate any potential flooding if we get a really fast runoff. The other one where we have issues downstream from City Creek on the North Temple. If people would like sandbags, please feel free to reach out to Public Utilities and also the Salt Lake County website. There are areas where sandbags, also working on a process in order to provide sandbags to less-abled individuals or elderly individuals as well. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, sorry, Briefer. Did you mention, well, you mentioned that they got Public Utilities picked up all the sandbags for staging? Did you mention where that will be, or will that just be on the, those different staging areas will be, or should we just look at the website? I know you've kept the website pretty up-to-date for people to gather information, but...
Right now, they're going to be staged at Public Utilities campus locations on 5th South, also on the West Temple location, because that's where we have our equipment that can deploy those sandbags easily. If we, as we get further into the season and start, if we start seeing potential issues on some of the streams that have not yet reached peak flow, then we'll probably find some other areas for those to be staged. Thank you.
But to be clear, are those areas, if individuals want sandbags for their own home, do they show up at those places, or they call?
No, they should go to the Salt Lake County Flood Control website for individual sandbags. Geneva Rock, that was the, that was the donor of the sand. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any more questions? Thank you, Director Briefer, you and your crew, and for everything they've done. So we're on to item number two. This is official beginning, or beginning, I don't know, of our budget season. So this is our presentation, and we're starting with the public library system. And we have Ben Lukey, Council Policy Analyst, here to introduce this. Debbie Airman, interim Library Director, Jace Bunteam, Finance Manager, and available for questions, Mary Beth Thompson, the city's Chief Financial Officer. Ben, do you want to give us introduction?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll give an introduction, and then the library has a presentation for you as well. This is the first briefing for the Fisclear 24 Proposed Library Budget. The annual budget public hearings are scheduled for May 16th and June 6th. See Attachment 1 for the Library Budget booklet. I'll go through three sections that you may be particularly interested in. The organizational chart is on page four. The staffing details are on pages six and seven. And the revenue and expenditure breakouts are on pages 10 to 13. The Library Board sets the policy for library operations. The council is responsible for reviewing and approving the overall budget for the library and setting the library's tax rate. The mayor has recommended that the council approve the library board's proposed budget. The total budget for the library is just over $33 million. This is 4.4 million, or 15% more than last year. This is mostly due to a one-time use of funding for capital projects. There's a $3.3 million increase from the library's fund balance for some of these capital projects. The fund balance for the library is separate from the city's general fund fund balance. Some other revenue changes include $475,000 from new growth in property taxes, $365,000 increase from interest earnings, and $84,500 of additional passport revenue. This is from expanding the hours of service and two new part-time employees providing those services. The largest expense... The largest expense in the budget is a $7.75 million roof renovation project at the main library downtown. Note that $4 million of this was approved in the last two fiscal years. The budget before you is requesting an additional $3.75 million. Other expenses include $400,000 for the master facilities plan that's available in attachment two. It's a 10-year look at potential capital improvements for the library's facilities. The $400,000 requested would focus on public engagement and concept development for future improvements to the Anderson Foothill branch and the main library. The following year in fiscal year 2025, the library plans to do the same thing for the Day Riverside branch. These efforts would provide information for those three locations, which could include major renovations or potentially even a rebuild. There is also $300,000 for Ballpark temporary branch renovations and collections. This is a reappropriation since those funds were not used in the current fiscal year. And this would be for the temporary new location in the Ballpark neighborhood. The last page of the staff report has a nine-year summary of the total budget and staffing for the library. It's available for reference if you wanted to look back on what previous changes have been. That's it for me. I'll turn it over to Debbie and her team who have a presentation for you.
Thank you, Ben. Hi, Debbie.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for having us here today. So we do have a presentation. I think it just kind, we caught, most of the information that's in the budget book is here in this slide presentation as well. So if you can advance a couple of slides there. So today I have with me Adam Wannaker behind me, who's our Board President, Jace Bunting, who's our Director of Finance, and then I have some other staff here in the audience. Next slide, please. So our budget priorities for fiscal year '24 are to invest in competitive compensation and growth opportunities for library employees through salaries, wages, employee benefits, and professional development. We are increasing our recruitment and retention of BIPOC employees, provide necessary resources for successful job fulfillment through adequate staffing capacities, supporting budgets, training resources, and physical spaces. Next slide. Additionally, we want to make progress on scheduled capital projects such as the roof at Main, maintain healthy and safe spaces by investing in the maintenance and betterment of critical building components as our fire suppression system, HVAC, electrical, sewer, and water systems throughout all of our buildings. Establish a staffed physical presence in the Ballpark neighborhood and pursue long-term solutions to further the master facilities plan. Next slide. Our general fund proposed budget, as Ben noted, is a little over $33 million. It's an increase of 4.4 million or 15.4%. And it's higher due to that transfer from our four capital projects for the roof. And the debt service fund proposed budget is $987,450 and the capital project fund proposed budget is $6,255,400. The next slide gives you kind of an overview of the different, you can see that we provided kind of history from our fiscal year '22 actual budget through our current proposed budget and it shows adopted revised budgets as well. So you can see the differences and the changes there. And if you have any questions as I'm presenting, feel free to interrupt and ask. Next slide. So as we noted and Ben noted, that our general fund significant revenue increases is 475,000 in property tax from new growth, 365 from interest earnings, and 84,500 from passport revenue. And here you see our general fund expenditures, so it kind of follows along that same structure and it provides the '22 actual through our fiscal year '24 proposed budget. You can see that, just to note, that probably our larger increases are the buildings, grounds, and equipment, which has to do with that, the roof project and those other capital projects as well as, I wanted to note, the transfers, grants, and donations. Is that correct, Jace?
I have a quick question maybe for Ben. On the buildings, grounds, and equipment, the 2.05 million, you're saying that the roof was actually $7 million?
Yeah.
But is that because, because it was allocated in previous year and it was a capital improvement? It doesn't need to be back in this budget? What, how are we getting to $7 million?
So, and I'll look to Jace as the library finance manager. My understanding is that that line item is separate from the capital projects. So this would not reflect the main library roof renovation or the other capital projects. This would be annual for buildings and grounds, more minor maintenance.
Okay. Does that match, Jace, what you...
Can you restate your question?
Just earlier, it was stated that the roof renovation on the main library is going to be about $7 million and we are seeing 2.05. So where's the other $5 million coming from?
So, so the amount in this building and grounds is our operating maintenance?
Okay. It's not capital improvements?
That was my error.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay. And then general fund personnel, we have, we are planning a 3% increase for colon longevity. We have a net negative of two tenths of new FTEs and three new positions. So the way that is going to, what makes that occur is that we have a full-time supervisor that we want, would like to hire of our substitute staff. And we have about 40 to 60 substitutes at any given time who generally fill in at all of our locations based on need. And all of our locations have a small, we call it our flex budget, to allow us to provide for substitute help when people are on vacation, sick, other, you know, leave situations. We are looking for a part-time accounting specialist and we hope to hire a part-time human resources associate. And then we have the two part-time passport agents, which will be funded by the projected revenue increase from expanded hours of passport services. That service has been in high demand and well-received by people in the community. And then we are eliminating three full-time equivalent custodians because we have started a custodial contract with an outside service provider who's been really just working at the main library in the evenings. Then our next, we talk a little bit about buildings and grounds. So there have been a significant increase in natural gas costs from, we experienced that this year in fiscal year '23. And then I mentioned that janitorial service at the main library collections. We are seeing an increase in demand in eBooks and audiobooks. And the next slide shows just how much that increase has been impacting that budget as well as, I think we've explained this in the past, but oftentimes, an average cost for like a paperback fiction book is somewhere around $5, whereas an average cost for any type of e-media can be $43. And it's just the publishers set the prices. It's just how it is right now with libraries and the publishing world. So even though the demand is higher and we really want to meet that need because people enjoy using the e-materials, particularly the books and the audio, we feel that when we want to try to purchase more for people. Plus, oftentimes, the publishers have a limits that you can only use the item for 24 uses or you have to, or two years, and then you have to repurchase the item if it's still in high demand. So it's not like a physical item that you can keep in your collection for a long time. So...
That's interesting. Can I ask a question back on the FTEs?
Sure.
I'm just wondering with the, so it's a point to FTE increase or decrease?
Decrease.
Decrease?
Mm-hmm.
So it's, okay, so it's negative point two FTEs?
That's okay.
And did three janitors lose their job or was it?
No, it was through attrition.
Thanks. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Yep. Councilmember Dugan?
Also on the FTEs, I remember the last budget season, we were talking about increasing the FTE count for the upcoming Ballpark mobile library. Did we increase that or did we, we did and we...
We funded it in, for this year's budget and we have hired an assistant manager and a librarian, but we've kind of held off our hiring a full-time associate and then some assistants to make up the, it'll be a staff of 4.8 FTE. And we're just waiting till we're a little closer to opening. Currently, the librarian and the assistant manager are working out of Glendale.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. I have a roof, one more roof question.
Sure.
On, you know, we also talked about fixing the roof last year too.
Yes.
And that was included in the budget. And do they start it and just, we just need to continue it because it's going over cost?
We delayed it because what we learned as they were, did more, you know, as we were working with our contractor and our architect, that we could, with that $4 million approximately, we could do all the waterproofing, but we couldn't bring it back to being usable for the public. We could put gravel on top of it. And so to enable us to actually have a better, I'll have a slide further along that'll show it, to have a better place for people to gather, we needed the increased budget to make that happen.
Okay, so we just basically kind of band-aided the first...
We haven't really started yet.
Okay.
We're gonna, our plan is if the budget passes, that we would begin in July, July 1st.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Councilmember Pui.
So, so we delayed it because it wasn't enough, it wasn't enough money.
Well, to do what we, what we would desire, yes.
Okay. But the delay and inflation is probably also eating on the money that we allocated.
Well, we've been working, we have a group that works our, we have our architects and our construction team and we meet bi-weekly. And right now, we're staying in budget. We may have to do some minor, you know, look at some cost savings here and there to minor parts of the design. But overall, if we, if we, if this budget is passed and we can move those funds from our fund balance, it'll allow us to, to meet the desired goal for that space.
Yeah, my concern, I just want to make sure that we, we remember this. Obviously, you guys have quite a bit of smart people on your team and they're on top of everything, but I want to make sure that we don't delay things too much because, you know, we see, you know, an upward trend on this, on these funds.
Yeah.
And then it means that we'll come back here to this, you know, to the council for more funds while we have a lot of...
I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, and their goal is to start July 1. We know, you know, we've looked at the cost for a crane because we'll have to crane materials up to the top of the roof and they are pretty confident that they can complete the project in 12 to 15 months and definitely stay within budget. Okay. All right, so let's see. Let's, oh, another question?
I don't know.
Okay.
Please continue.
I think we're on slide 13 now. Yeah. So we want to transfer approximately $5.8 million to, from the general fund transfer to capital fund. And that includes 1.5 million in designated facilities and technology funds. So every, we've had those designated funds since 2017, 18. And we put, so they're divided, 900,000 into facilities and 600,000 into like technology annually. And then we have the 4.3 million for capital projects. And then our fund balance projected at the end of fiscal year '23 is estimated to be about 30% of the fiscal year '24 budget. But with those funds, if they're, you know, if it's approved and we can move it into that other, those projects, it'll, it'll be down to 16.7% of fiscal year, at the end of fiscal year '24, which is 16% is usually our target for our fund balance. Any questions about that? Sure.
Can you just go back?
Looks like there was no question. We just wanted...
Oh, no question. You just wanted to read it.
I just wanted to see the slide a little longer.
Okay. All right. The next slide shows our debt service fund and it is lower because thanks to the city, they refinanced the Glendale and Marmalade branch bonds and so that is a savings for us. And then here, the next slide is our capital projects fund. And you can, if you've got, if you'd like us to go into more detail and explain any of that, feel free, but you can see, we kind of laid out what the total revenues are and then the different outlays and that $5 million is the, Jace, is that the amount for the roof, right?
Well, yeah, that includes the roof.
Roof included with the request that we're making for the 3.75. Any questions about that?
Can you say that again? The 5.19...
198 includes...
The 5.198 includes the new money for the roof. And then we would have the money from fiscal year '23 that will eventually roll into that because that money would carry over and that would give us the amount for the roof. And then there are other capital projects related to buildings that are also in that number, but the bulk of that is the roof project.
Got it. Councilmember Petro?
Foothill is the branch that has the issues with the foundation?
Yes.
How are we, I love the rooftop, my kids love the rooftop, I get it. How are we prioritizing that over foothills?
Yeah, we, it's, it's not as dire as maybe some of the rumors may have, but, but we are seeing some movement and we are watching it. We've been working with a structural engineer to work on making sure that we're not seeing anything major happen. I mean, we are watching it pretty closely right now because the ground is so saturated, but we're, we feel pretty confident that we are okay and we have enough time to, to spend time on doing the community engagement to forward our plans for Anderson Foothill and Main Library and Day Riverside. While we may wait till fiscal year '25, we think there may be enough money in what we're asking for, for the community engagement work and the, the concept planning. If in the future, we look for funding for the master facilities plan to, to make that work and that Foothill will be okay and is stabilized enough.
And then it's my personal one-note song that I sing. We have the forward indicators of recession here.
Yes.
The lagging will be the sales tax and those other things.
Yes.
And so with a decrease of 30 to 16.5% of the fiscal year '24, do you have reserves that will be adequate for, if foothills does become more urgent? Or are you, I will be loath to approve a tax hike during a recession.
Yeah.
So I would like us to be as conservative as possible and as liquid as possible.
So again, this is estimates and it's kind of based on, you know, the engineer has looked at, I'm a little hesitant to throw out a number, but a number that has been shared with us is that we, if we needed to go in and do some stabilization, it would probably be about $500,000. And I believe that we would then have the adequate funds in our fund balance to help us manage that if we needed to.
Thank you.
Next slide. So here's a list of our major capital projects. So as we mentioned before, the 3.75 million for the main library roof project. We do need to put in a new cooling tower at the main library and they're expensive, $500,000, but it's about 20 years old and we've done as many patches and repairs as we can on it. So we do need to replace a cooling tower at the main library. As I just talked about, the $400,000 for the master facilities plan concept development. And that includes Anderson Foothill, Main Library, and to create a west side plan. $400,000 for a PC server and network replacements, $300,000, which is the money that we're carrying over. We took, 262,000 was in this year's budget for renovations for our Ballpark temporary location and we took some money, we had 100,000 in collections. The space is too small, we couldn't even support that. So we took some of the money from collections to kind of boost up the renovation budget. And then 250,000 additional to acquire and implement a human resource information system. And then 200,000 to expand and enhance the camera security system at all locations. Any questions about that? Okay. Next slide gives you a plan, the plan for the roof. So some of the things that we have enhancements that we're looking at based on as the roof, you know, yes, waterproofing is like our key thing and it's actually the most expensive piece of it. Unfortunately, Main Library has had kind of a leaking situation since it opened 20 years ago. So waterproofing and then the enhancements for the community to enjoy the space. We did a community engagement survey late last summer for about a month and a half or so and we did get a lot of feedback from the community. And they really want places to hang out, relax. Yes, it would be nice if we have some programming, but they actually wanted the space to be just more general use, less programmed. We built in some shade structures. If you look at the upper tip of the triangle, we are still maintaining some greenery and some green space, although the pieces that look like lawn would be artificial turf. We're really trying to make it as sustainable. The, the wall that looks out towards like the University of Utah where that kind of white piece is in the front of the slide... where that kind of white piece is in the front of the slide, we are building up the, putting glass barriers there to enhance our security and safety for people who utilize the space. But still let people have great views, so. We're excited about it, so, you know, think it'll be a great space. I wanted to give you a little bit of information about our plans for the ballpark area. As you know, we are, we are actually closing on this particular property either Friday or Monday. And that is a duplex. And as we looked at the two properties, we felt like the duplex was really going to meet our needs better. It's slightly smaller space, but because you can see from kind of the general layout, if you take all the walls down, that it would allow us to keep staff in this, in the space, as well as have a better ADA restroom, which is that little part that juts out into the more wide open space. It'll be an express services location. We would change the entryway, the entrances currently into both duplexes around 1400 South. We would change the entryway, there's a window that faces West Temple, and there's like a little fenced in, you know, yard space there, that we would make the entry into the building. So people would enter from West Temple. We feel like it'll just give us more wall space to utilize for our collections. And mainly, it'll be holds pickup, small browsable collections, a couple of computers. We will only, we'll have limited hours, Monday through Saturday, 1 to 6, and just be a space for, to engage with the community and learn about like what might our future plan be in the next three to five years. Any questions about that? Okay. All right, and then I just wanted to give you a little bit of updates from fiscal year 23. And we do greatly appreciate that you gave us a tax increase last year. And so we did use those funds for, for two major things that were a big part of this current fiscal year's budget, which was to increase safety and to address safety for staff and the public, particularly at the Main Library. So we, in December of last year, we hired a licensed clinical social worker to fill the new role of social services coordinator. And this position has brought in a total of six new local partnerships with Toon Process. And I think that's increased, because I think we had one, we had, we've had a great 10-year relationship with the Volunteers of America, and that still continues. But we've brought in about six or seven new local social service partners to address a variety of needs within the community of people who, who oftentimes look for those services. We have people working with domestic violence, as well as drug addiction. And we bring, the sports street mobile clinic van comes to the library once a week. We work with Valley Behavioral Health and Asian Association, as well as Valley Behavioral Health. So we are continuing to add services. Volunteers of America is providing regular hours at the Main Library, and we're really seeing some good progress on that front. And we feel like we're meeting a need within that community that we serve. We have also, we budgeted for four new safety associates and one safety supervisor. And that added capacity allowed for the safety team, who we really are focusing more on medical interventions and relationship building, and less on, you know, and just enforcing our guidelines and code of conduct, but also just trying to build the relationships with people in our community. And so that, they've, that certification has helped a great deal. So they've responded to 51 medical calls at Salt Lake City Public Library. And of course, we're closely with local EMS. And we have seen an increase since 2021 in criminal activity and inappropriate conduct, mainly at the Main Library. But, so our, our safety incidents have increased the number of incidents that we've had to respond to. But at the same time, we kind of view, particularly for this year, weather has been difficult for people, as well as the possibility of having more safety associates on staff, more eyes on things. So there might be, you know, that might contribute to the increase in those incidences. But we're continuing to track that.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Councilor Dugan.
Debbie, you see, do you see a need in any of the other libraries for clinical social worker? Or is it just the main, I know the main library is the biggest one, but.
But some of those, like particularly VOA, they do go out to our other locations, but we're trying to coordinate services down at Main. But I believe if there's need, that we can make arrangements with some of our partners to go out and, and set up appointments out there, rather than just at the Main Library. Okay. And then, last slide, we're celebrating 125 years of our existence. We started in 1898 in the City County Building. We had 10,000 items in our collection, and now we have millions more that we have available at all of our locations. We started out as, you know, a, you know, small lending library, and now we have, in one location, that's gone to almost eight locations once we opened our temporary ballpark location, or we're calling it express services. So that's the budget. Does anyone have any other questions?
Senator Dron. Back to the ballpark, when do you think that would be opening? I didn't remember.
Well, our, we're, we're trying to get all of our plans, and, and because it's almost like a residence that we're renovating, it is a residence that we're renovating. It, we hope to have all of our plans together so we can complete the permitting process. And if we can do that, then our hope is to start renovation July 1. And ideally, we have a target of October 1, but maybe it'll move a little quicker.
Councilors, any more questions? Petro.
Um, sorry, I've been marinating whether this is a question I need to ask or not, but it's still in my head, so I need to.
Sure.
On one of your early slides, you referenced that you are, you have a goal for retaining BIPOC employees. Is there a strategy to ensure that those employees are stratified throughout the organization, including into the higher echelons of leadership, and not just in entry-level positions?
Uh, yes, with our current, we, we will be, we've, we have contracted with an executive search firm. And so we are starting to, we hope to be posting the position for the executive director in May. And we, we deliberately went with a firm that we, that has a track record of recruitment and, and hiring of BIPOC leadership, so we're looking at that. We have looked at all of our job descriptions, and we often, we do offer options for people to substitute educational requirements for maybe, I'm sorry, experience requirements, and even different educational requirements to kind of match the needs that we have. So we're, we're taking a look at that. We have implemented, let's see, it was January 2021, we hired an equity coordinator, and that has now built out based on your, last year's budget. And the tax increase allowed us to really build out that department, and it's a department of five people that's now equity and organizational development. So we have a strong component there, along with our staff training, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilors, any more questions for the library proposed budget? Thank you, Debbie.
Okay, thank you very much.
For your presentation. The next item is item number three, which is the 2023-2024 proposed budget for the Department of Public Utilities. So at the table, we have Laura Briefer, Director of Public Utilities, Jesse Stewart, Deputy Director, Marian Rice, Deputy Director, and Lisa Tarfetelli, Finance Administrator. Do we have?
We're switching a chair.
Okay.
It was a little unsteady looking.
Let's not, yes, let's not let anyone fall off their chair. Sam, are you giving us an introduction to this item? Okay, Sam Owen from Council Policy Staff will introduce.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. The fiscal year 24 Public Utilities budget is in front of the council right now. Highlights for this year include ongoing rate increases in all four of the utilities. So the rate increase in water is in fact 18%, not 15%. However, the rate increase in sewer is 15%, not 18%. So the rate increase as proposed in the stormwater utility is 10%, as well as 10% in the street lighting utility. Furthermore, in the water utility, a drought surcharge is proposed that would apply to the higher blocks three and four of water use. Might have an impact to a high-using residential household of $50 a month, and upward from there, depending on the customer and the amount of use, into other classes of customer as well, more likely to use more water, for example. Finally, the bonding activity in the utilities is anticipated at about 62 million in water and 51 million in sewer, with approximately 5 million proposed to issue from the stormwater utility, and no new bonds in the street lighting utility. Finally, a rate study is proposed for water, sewer, and stormwater, as well as further rate study for the street lighting utility. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Hi, Laura, again.
Good afternoon again. I, I have with me today our Deputy Director Marian Rice, our Chief Engineer Jason Brown, and Lisa Tarfetelli, our Finance Administrator. Jesse Stewart was planning to be here, but his priority right now is on runoff matters. So he is here with us in spirit. Also, this may be the first budget proposal that you see that has sort of a new consistent format across city departments. So what we show here is something you'll see on a lot of other budget proposals. This is the city landscape, and really kind of denotes that all of our city departments are part of one city. And we all have a little piece of this landscape. And ours, the public utilities piece is water-related and street lighting. So we've got the water running off the Wasatch Mountains, which signifies most of our water supplies, a storm drain grate, and a street light. A longstanding mission for our Public Utilities Department is serving our community and protecting our environment. You'll see a photo on the left is the Albion Basin, which is part of the little cottonwood watershed, where we get a lot of our water supply, as well as where Sandy City gets its water supply as well. And then the picture on the right is some of our workforce. We're out there standing next to one of our big Vector trucks, which you probably see out and about a lot right now, helping to manage our runoff right now, this, this season. The, the mission of our department, from my perspective, is really ingrained at all levels of our department. And that's kind of why I put this picture here, from our field staff to our office staff, really is committed to this mission. Um, we do have a pretty detailed budget book, and this is something that's on the, attached to the council agenda. It's got a lot of information in it, but just, you know, this, these are just some of the pieces of information in this book. We've got insights that are overarching across our department, as well as through each of our utilities. And we have some very detailed budget summaries with cash flows and capital improvement programs through fiscal year 2028. And we have some appendices that you've seen before in budget presentations, with comparisons with other communities, how do our rates look compared to other communities? And then something new this year is a financial capability assessment for our community that really digs into the impact of rates on, on community members. And Deputy Director Rice here led that capability assessment over the last couple of years. But I do have a slide in here that, that summarizes some of that. Um, so our overarching budget insights this year, we've got nine or 10 of them. But the first one is that it's really important for us to assess and replace all of our aging water, sewer, and stormwater and street lighting infrastructure. That continues to be a high priority and is a key driver of our ongoing rate increases. Another key driver is our federal and state regulatory obligations. As you know, we have obligations under, under the Federal and State Safe Drinking Water Act, the Federal and State Clean Water and Water Quality Acts, and then statutes related to water resources. A third insight, and this isn't unique to our department or our city, but inflationary pressures have had a big impact on both the operations and the capital side of our, of our utility. And it's just been increasing the cost to replace aging infrastructure to meet our regulatory obligations and to bond for projects. And this is particularly a large impact when you think about the scale of the projects that we have. So for instance, replacement of both our, our water reclamation facility, as well as our drinking water treatment plants, those are very large vertical infrastructure projects that are in the tens to hundreds of millions that are vulnerable to these inflationary pressures. Another insight, drought conditions over the last two years have significant revenue impact on the water utility. We are the only business that tells people not to buy our product. And our community was very, very successful in doing what we asked in terms of water conservation. But the flip side of that is that our water utility has, has about $30 million in revenue loss over the last two years, which kind of has a cascading impact year over year as we move forward. Um, so the combination of our inflation and regulatory pressures require adjustments to our rates. But this year, we're also going to be looking more closely in our, in our rate study at rate design, some financing strategies, as well as reprioritization or deferral of some, some projects, especially some of our larger projects. Rate design, I think, is going to be important as we move forward, because we're still in a drought, and one year of a good snowpack like this year may not, we may not exit from the drought. And so we want to be cognizant that, you know, we're going to be asking for people to conserve, but the rates have to be designed in a way that we don't have significant impacts, particularly to the water utility, because those costs are fixed, for the most part. One other thing we've done that's different this year from previous year's present, presentations is we attempted to assign a score to our operational and capital programs for the utilities. And so we've looked at this and, with respect to our operational programs, as well as our capital programs. This budget matrix is something that each department has implemented in their budget process. And it has to do with, you know, whether the service we, we provide is mandated, whether, whether others provide the service, like what is the reliance of our community on the service? How, how much of our community benefits? What are the equity issues, environmental, social government's resiliency, and then the mayor's goals and the council priorities? And so this matrix has a range of scoring. And so I looked at this with respect to the operational programs for our three water-related utilities, water, sewer, and stormwater. And an example of the programs that this scoring reflex includes, federal and state safe drinking water act programs, that includes lead and copper rule compliance, the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, source water protection programs, and water resiliency plans. All of those are required under both federal and state laws. We also have programs required under the Federal Clean Water Act and the State Utah Water Quality Act. That includes our stormwater regulations under our municipal separate, municipal separate stormwater system permit and our city's wastewater discharge elimination permit under the Utah pollutant discharge elimination, elimination system. And then other programs are associated with compliance with state statutes related to water resources, particularly water rights. That's annual water use reporting, participation in the litigation under the state water rights adjudication process, water resources planning over the next 40 to 60 years, water conservation planning, and water rate evaluations. planning and water rate evaluations and studies. All of those are found and required to, to our department under various sections of state code. We also scored the street lighting operations and capital programs on its own separately. And with respect to street lighting, that is not, that is more of a self mandate for the city, so that is why that score is a little bit lower than the water-related programs, but still very important for, for safety purposes and community character purposes. And the last of our insights for this fiscal year, our proposed budget aligns directly with several of the mayor, mayor's goals, as well as longstanding city council priorities. Some of these include the preparation of a water audit for our municipal facilities, the preparation of a new drought and water shortage contingency plan, an updated long-term water supply and demand plan that will integrate the contribution of water resources to Great Salt Lake, continued advocacy for federal protections for the city's Wasatch watersheds, some interdepartmental work to implement dark skies concepts for both public and, and private street lighting, and the prioritization of, of the replacement of lead service lines in schools and disadvantaged communities as part of our compliance with the federal lead and copper rule. Finally, the proposed budget includes the addition of 16 full-time equivalent positions to meet many of those regulatory programmatic requirements that I just illustrated, expand our safety program for the department, and generally just support our economic and geographic growth. One thing to note is this includes four new employees to meet the requirements of Senate Bill 174. This is a bill that requires the city to expedite its timing and development reviews. So we needed to staff up on our development staff to, to do that with four new employees. So that will bring staffing from 477 to 493 employees for the department across the four Our total public utilities budget by program, the total departmental budget is a little under 509 million. And we can look at that budget, breaking down operations, which is 133.5 million, capital, which is a little over 334 million, and debt, which is 41.2 million. I should note that on the capital side, a, a large chunk of that is reflected in the water reclamation facility rebuild, as well as the rehabilitation of the City Creek Water Treatment Plant. Again, those are costly, large projects. And that's where the debt is as well. We could also look at our budget total by, by utility fund, and you'll see that the sewer utility is about 301.8 million, water utility 178 million, stormwater 22.9 million, and street lighting about a little over 6 million. Again, with the sewer utility, the water reclamation facility is a large part of that project, and same with the water utility, we have a lot of capital in there as well, which is good because we're addressing the city's aging water-related infrastructure. Total revenues and expenditures by category, this is a table from our budget book. One thing I wanted to point out on the revenues under this, in this slide, if you look at the line about three lines up from the bottom on the revenue graph, you'll see a contribution change between the adopted budget and the amended budget. That looks like a large change. That reflects the federal grant that the city is receiving to rebuild the City Creek Water Treatment Plant. That grants about $37 million, and that was included in, in a budget amendment this Any questions before I move forward?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Thanks. On that previous slide, I did have to put in a photo of Great Salt Lake because Great Salt Lake is a priority for our department and the city, and it's something that we're working really hard to address. The next few slides here are by fund, so we'll start with the water utility fund. And here we've broken down expenditures by program on the, the chart on the right of the slide. So operations in the water utility are just about $88.1 million. Capital is about just under $80 million. And then debt service for fiscal year 24 is about $10.1 million for a total budget of 177.9, just, just under 178 million. This includes 8.8 additional full-time equivalent employees for the water utility, an 18% rate increase, the federal grant under the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities grant that I just mentioned for 30, 37 million dollars, and a conservative estimate of what our operating sales revenue is going to be. We took the lessons learned over the last two to three years related to, to the drought conditions and used that information to have a realistic operating sales revenue expectation.
Victoria, question, actually.
Yes.
On, on the water side of the house, we talked about the rate increase on when you're, you know, we've done a great job of conserving water the last couple of years, which of course is so impacted our revenue. Are we, what kind of curve are we using for future revenue and future savings? Because I know we're not going to be able to maintain 20%, of course, but is it flatlining it on that side? And then this, now ask my second question.
Do you want to address that, Lisa?
Yeah. Here you go. I think it'll work if you just.
Here, we'll just, we'll word it this way. So that is a great question. As you are well aware, water revenue is probably one of the most difficult to try and project since it is consumptive based, but as Laura has mentioned, our costs are fixed costs. So traditionally, what had been done at the utility for a number of years was to take kind of a five-year rolling average look, and then.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt.
It.
Dan, will you mute your mic just because I was making it difficult to hear the answer? Thank you.
But it just, with that five-year average, we came to realize as we came into these drought years, that was not a sustainable model. So as Laura mentioned, we did take a step back and just look at the, the numbers in a very conservative way and base it on the last two years of consumption. And that's where you saw that $30 million shortfall number. That's comprised of a real number that we noted in fiscal year 22, and then as we're projecting, as we do monthly updates through 23. So what we did is we based our fiscal year 24 projection, of course, on a more realistic number because we are asking people to continue to conserve. So it is definitely a concern, like what does that look like going forward? And that's where we'll get into that balance with rate design for the fixed cost portion to be covered, you know, within that sales scope that we have and redesign, since the design right now, if people don't use water, we don't, don't get money, that, that isn't probably sustainable. And so I think with the rate design that, and, and we follow that conservative trend that hopefully that allows us to even out rate increases to be more gradual as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. My second question is on the drought surcharge for Tier 3 and Tier 4. I'm assuming that's for residential, but do we have the same tier structure for commercial and industrial, and it's the same type of drought structure for them also?
Right, that is correct. There is a four-tier structure in the summer months for all water consumers. And the way that drought surcharge, there was a lot of discussion with staff and our PUAC members, a lot of back and forth. And so that is every Block 3 and Block 4 rate that you'll see us present in the consolidated fee schedule has that flat 66 cents on Block 3 and $1.17 on Block 4.
Councilmember Petro.
Will we get more thoroughly to rate design later? I, I have questions about rates, but I can wait until it's presented to make it more logical.
We don't have a detailed presentation on rate design in this, in this budget proposal, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And when we, when we do our rate, our next rate study, well, and the last one was like this too, we get a community rate advisory committee as, to participate in that because it's really up to the community what values they want to see in their water rates and sewer rates. The last time we, our 35-person rate advisory committee met and we developed a, a rate structure, the priorities were water conservation and affordability, rate defensibility, and rate reliability were the key priorities, which are sometimes in conflict with each other, frankly.
Yeah. Well, and that's kind of, that's kind of my question, because there's literally nothing that you're doing that I would say in terms of mission work should be at all stopped. Like the, the water reclamation facility is fantastic, the conservation efforts, you're dealing with, you know, climate change-induced floods right now, like you, the work that you're doing is undeniable. But what's also undeniable is that so many people who live in our neighborhoods, maybe people who have never watered a lawn before, who are living in like multiplexes and things, are not getting 15 to 18% a year increases to their budget, yet they are having to account for that. And just showering is going to cost them more year over year, and this is becoming a real inflection point now for people. And the fear of the drought surcharge on top of it is fueling even more fears. I, I know I'm probably trying to get blood from a turnip here by asking this question, but I mean, miracles never cease, let's try. Is there any way we can alleviate some of the pressure, especially for those families that, you know, are at the place where this is pinching them?
Yeah, and, and that's one of the reasons why I think it's a priority for the city to revisit its rate study and its rate structure. Right now, we do have customer assistance programs in place, but we have question, you know, we've had questions, Lisa and I have talked about this a lot, and Marion, about are they adequate for all members of our community that are impacted? And that's actually why we prioritize the financial capability assessment for the community because we didn't feel like we understood the demographics of our community well enough. And we did a lot of research over the last two years to better understand community demographics, income levels, percent of the cost of water and sewer, particularly that combined cost, and not only impact on median household incomes, but also lowest quintile residential incomes. And that, that kind of information is going to be key to inform an effective rate design. The drought surcharge, and I pulled up the slide here on the drought surcharge that has a little more detail, that, that is an industry standard part of our rate structure that can be implemented to accomplish two things. One is to incentivize conservation efforts at the highest water use rates during the summertime. Typically, that's outdoor watering. That's what Blocks 3 and 4 typically are. The other major goal of a drought surcharge is to recover a portion of the revenue loss because, as we described, we've lost nearly $30 million worth of projected revenue. Our costs to run critical infrastructure remain the same. And so we're, it's, it's a conundrum, honestly, for us. So we obviously aren't trying to recover $30 million in a drought surcharge, and we've never done this as a city, so we wanted to take baby steps on that. So we, we devised a surcharge based on recovery of 5 million, which honestly probably won't recover 5 million because it will probably work in terms of water conservation.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Plie.
Yeah, so I have a, a couple of questions. Obviously, I would love to dig in also as well on, on this concept a little more. Obviously, I do believe that water is, you know, is something that shouldn't be very cheap, especially on a place like, like Utah. We need to be better. Utah, as you know better than anybody else, we use more water than any other desert state in, in the country. We, we take very long showers, we water too much lawns, and we should change that behavior. But I also am afraid about people that are not connected to the city and they are not knowing about, you know, moving to Block 3 or 4 and how they impact. So I think it needs to be accompanied with some education, with a lot of education to make sure that people know what their, their options are, and not only just impose this. I mean, I think that this is the right approach, you know, just from the get-go, but I, I really think that this needs to be paired out with a very strong educational campaign that tells people, what are your options about your lawn? These are the rebates, and these are the things that you could do about to, to conserve some water. I, I also would like to know about how many estimated households are be, going to be impacted by district. I, that would be very interesting to me. And I also want to make sure that there are not significant impacts on businesses that are employing hundreds of people in, 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 in our city. Obviously, we want to make sure that they are doing their part as well. But, you know, in my district here, I just heard last week about a, you know, a candy company that has been in the district for, in the city for over 100 years, and they're a little worried about this, these things. And, you know, those are very good jobs for people in my district. So, and I also have a question, which is on the staff report about utility, those that are getting utility assistance and what their impact is on this. I just want to make, I want to make sure that those that are getting already assistance on their utilities don't get impacted because they already need help to, you know, so that is a very, very important question for me. So I would appreciate some time to talk about this.
Yeah, of course. We would be happy to talk about that. Okay.
Sorry, can I ask a follow-up question, Mr. Chair? Sort of, it's one of the things that you mentioned, Director Briefer, is the rate design and kind of having this study, really understanding who our consumers are, what the household makeup looks like, what our businesses look like, so that we can actually design an effective rate that maybe addresses a lot of these concerns up here that we're, we're talking about. But one of the, there's like rate design, and then there's immediate help, right? Because this rate design is going to take a couple of years either to figure out and/or implement where we actually see some different effects of it. Yet, as you mentioned earlier, the inflationary pressures aren't just on public utilities or the city corporation or anything like that, it's really on our small business, our everyone, right? Our homeowners, our renters, our residents, our business partners, everybody. And so I'm just wondering, are there, what is there, are there things that we as a city can do? Do we need to increase, look at increasing any of our, our public utilities assistance programs? Do we need to start looking at where can we look at some of these funds that we may or may not have? But it's budget season, and this is what we do, so that we can address more of our residents and their needs. And especially, I think, Councilmember Petro Eschler, Petro brought this up, haven't called you that in a minute. You know, there's, there's a real possibility that we might be looking at some recessionary type of economic impacts, right? And, and so I'm really curious and would love to have another, have you come back maybe with some ideas of what an increased role we can have in some of these utility assistance programs?
No, I think, I think that's a really valuable question, and the, the point about, you know, inflationary impacts are to everyone, not just to the city and the services that the city provides. And, and that's also why we wanted to do that financial capability assessment. And I think that the city overall is looking at that too, so we'll be putting this with kind of a more holistic look on cumulative. So, we'll be putting this with kind of a more holistic look on cumulative impacts if the city is raising fees or, you know, charges for other services as well. But we'd be happy to come back and talk about customer assistance programs. And we're working with the state on a customer assistance program as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I have a question. Thanks. So Laura, I think I heard you say earlier that maybe we do need to, that you have been doing research on demographics and maybe that we also need to take a look, a better look at the rate system and maybe combine it with the demographics and see how the rates should be or what's more fair, depending on the usage and the type of household and the type of business and all the things. Is this something that we can, is this study, is it something that we could commission this year? And do you think we can have it done for next year so that we have a better idea on how to move forward next year's budget? And then, how much do you need for that study?
So, we do have this study, the rate study, in this year's budget proposed. And I can't remember what the, it's probably about $750,000. I think it's about $750,000 for the study that's in this year's budget proposal. This year, '24, yeah. And that includes, there's a lot of public engagement in that because that's a key part of that kind of a study.
Okay. So, next year, like, with that study, I mean, it's a heft, it's an expensive study. It's almost a million dollars. Next year, will we have all the answers that we need to move forward with these rates and how we're going to charge people? Because I don't want to come back next year and you tell me, well, we only studied this part and we didn't do this part, so we need another $500,000 to study this other part. And, like, we're never there. Like, I want to have something ready next year, within a year, to tell us where we're standing. I mean, great, great progress we've done with conserving water and all of the things. But I would like to know by next year, this is how we're moving forward so that it's fair for everybody.
Yeah, for everybody. And that's the goal. We update our rate studies every five years or so because our community changes around us. And so, equity, equitable rates and equity is a really important part of a rate study, which is why it gets redone, you know, so often, so that we make sure that we capture demographic changes and other changes in our community. So, that's what's on tap for this year, is to get that five-year study completed. Yes, yeah, thank you for the question. Thank you. I did go ahead here. This is one of the last slides of our presentation, but because we've had so much discussion right now on financial capability and rates, I thought I would, if it's okay, I thought I would show. These are just dashboards that are plucked out of a really comprehensive and detailed study. So, the financial capabilities assessment is actually something that is in the guidelines under the Clean Water Act. And it's been there for some time because there are a lot of communities where the regulatory requirements are so significant that communities are worried about, can they afford it? And that's particularly been an issue in areas where communities have combined sewer and stormwater systems, and they have these really major compliance issues with the Clean Water Act and really big projects that they have to do. Over the last few years, Environmental Protection Agency and utilities like us across the nation came together to talk about, how do we really understand financial capabilities? So, EPA's guidelines for the longest time for just the wastewater side, the sewer and stormwater side, is that no 2%, no more than 2% of median household income should go towards sewer and stormwater rates. And then, the general practice is that for combined water, sewer and stormwater, no more than 4% of median household income should go towards paying your water, sewer, and stormwater bills. And so, if you look at our community for this fiscal year, under median household income, you can see that we are well below that threshold with our proposed rate increases for all kinds of use, minimum use, low use, and medium use of water. But if you look at, one of the recommendations for the, from the American Society of Public Administrators to EPA, which EPA has not included in its draft guidance, is that median household income is not reflective of the entire community. And so, we wanted to look at lowest quintile residential indicator. And so, our financial capability assessment looks at that too. You can still see we're below that threshold with our proposed rate increases, but for that medium use threshold, which is really kind of medium-high use, we are kind of inching up towards that 4% threshold. So that's informative for us, and that'll be informative for our rate studies. I know we have, we have three other utilities to go through, and I just want to make sure we're okay on time here or if we want to open it up to questions.
We're scheduled until 3:45, which is 10 more minutes.
Okay, all right. I'm happy to run through these or if we just want to go to questions and discussion.
Why don't we run through them quick? And then we can, we've had a lot of good discussion already. Why don't we go through these slides quickly?
Thank you. So, moving from the Water Utility Fund to the Sewer Utility Fund, the total budget for that fund is 300, a little under $302 million. As you can see by the chart, 242.1 million is capital, and that is largely the water reclamation facility reconstruction with 29.1 in debt and 30.4 in operations. We're looking at a 15% rate increase. This is the same rate increase we've been projecting for the last several years. Three and three-quarter additional employees for a total of 133 in the sewer utility. Interesting to note that the water reclamation facility is 88% of the capital budget here, but we have other capital projects like the collection system and lift stations. The stormwater utility budget is a total of just under 30 mil, or 20, sorry, 23 million with about 11.2 in operations, 9.9 million in capital, and 1.7 million in debt. We have about three and a half additional full-time equivalent employees for a total of 46 in the stormwater utility. Those are largely to meet new regulatory requirements. And also, as our community has continued to expand and develop into the northwest quadrant, we just have more area to operate on a daily basis. The capital program includes conveyance lines, lift stations, and detention basins. You've seen a lot of those that work over the last week during runoff and will continue to be hard at work through probably June during runoff season. The street lighting utility budget is just over $6 million with operating sales revenue expected to be 4 point, about 4.6 million of that. We're proposing a 10% rate increase in street lighting. Since the utility became the steward of the street lighting service for the city in 2013, we haven't had a rate increase. And we'd like to, first, you know, there's some work to do to implement the new street lighting master plan, but also, that utility has also been impacted by inflation. Capital and operational programs include lighting system upgrades and maintenance. And then, we have some work to meet some city goals regarding dark skies compliance. We have calculated the rate impacts of all four utilities for different, examples of different types of customers on our system. There's really no average customer because there's so much variability across the system. So, we looked at rate impacts based on the amount of water used by a customer. And we've looked at it in terms of minimum use, residential low use, medium use, and high use, just to get a sense of what the combined impact of all of these rate increases would be over last year. And that information will be included into, as I discussed earlier, a holistic look at what the city's overall fee increases are going to look like. So, an example, I know personally with respect to my family, we would fall into that residential low water use. I have a family of four. That would be 800 cubic feet per month. And my overall impact would be around $9.33. And like I said, there's a lot of variability across the system.
Mr. Chair?
Councilor Plie?
So, a quick question, this is pure ignorance. What is the street lighting group one base and group two? Can you help me understand this?
Right, so, when we, when the, when the street lighting program became a utility, we first looked at just sort of base lighting with the street lighting master plan at the time. So that's, you know, streetlights at intersections of arterials and mid-block. But there were also a number of special assessment areas, street lighting special assessment areas in the city. So, for instance, the lights in Rose Park and other special assessment areas also came over to the utility. And those are more costly to maintain. And so, we created different, there's four or three.
We have base and three.
We have the base lighting, and then we have three different street lighting tiers to reflect those special assessment areas.
So, the difference rate, the different rate in group one, two versus base is having the fancier light.
That's correct. Like, there's the commercial business district, there's Rose Park. So Marion's saying Sugar House, Arlington, and Capital.
And tier three is downtown, a sugar house business district, 2100 South Island.
We have a list of all of them.
Okay, yeah, I would love to see that. And, yeah, wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good question because we didn't really explain what these different groups are in here. And we already talked about the financial capability assessment analysis. We do a five-year rate outlook, and this is similar to what you've seen over the last few years, except for water. I expect that to look a little different when we do our rate study. We had to, for a five-year outlook, we're having to balance debt service and capital projects. We did defer the rebuild of the big cottonwood water treatment plant, which is a very big project. But we're still, in order to meet operations, debt service, and capital needs that we've identified, we're still looking at 20% rate increases. But like I said, I think we're going to need to really dig into a rate study on that to really be sure. And that's the end of our presentation. Thank you so much.
Councilmembers, any additional questions for public utilities? Councilman Petrow?
So, we did go for that meeting the other day. And I, just a quick question. They were talking about the possibility of an anaerobic generator to help with some things. And as more distilleries and breweries come online, maybe this is a communal benefit. Are there any plans for anything like that in any of the improvements we're making?
Are you, are you referring to wastewater treatment?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, Jason, would you like to, here's our chief engineer.
So, it's not specifically to breweries or a private partnership like that. We at the reclamation facility right now generate a lot of our energy through the digestive process that we do there now, convert it to natural gas and then to electricity to use at the plant. We did an analysis early on in the project, and things have changed over the time. Economics might be worth looking at again to see if it's more favorable now to do that. We've also reached out to other, well, they've reached out to us. Some other companies have reached out to us about piping our gas offsite and having them generate, generating it and giving it back to us as credits. And that was something we looked at. Again, at the time, three years ago, it was, did not make sense. But now with the way the economics are, it may make better sense to do that. So, we can look at it.
One of those studies was on creating our own fertilizer project, product, similar to the Malorganite that Milwaukee creates. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Briefer and team. Okay, we're moving on to the next item, which is number four on our agenda. It is another proposed budget, this time fiscal year 2023 through 2024, proposed budget for the Department of Airports. We will have, is it Sam, you again? Sam Owen from Council Policy Staff, Bill Wyatt, the Executive Director of the airports, Brian Butler, the Chief Financial Officer of Airports, and Mary Beth Thompson is still in the audience for questions if needed.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. The item before you is the fiscal year '24 budget for the Department of Airports that operates the Salt Lake City International Airport as well as the two regional facilities in South Jordan and Tuilla. The airport budget for this year includes a request related to incremental capital improvement program, funding $175 million for various projects requested in this year's budget, including EV charging stations, water and sewer at the regional Tuilla facility, as well as about $62 million to a tranche of work connected with constructing a new parking facility as well as realignment of the surplus canal, which currently cuts across the proposed construction area. The surplus canal is a flood control facility, and along with the rest of ours, stormwater conveyance system supports conveyance to the Great Salt Lake. The airport also requests new bonding this year related to its terminal redevelopment and concourse construction programs. This is in addition to the $683 million the council approved last year and then appropriated to the same capital project. So that is an ongoing, those are ongoing issuances. And the airport should come back to you sometime in May to talk more on the specifics of the next round, so that not so much the focus of today's briefing, as I understand it. A couple other reference points here. The cost per implanted passenger is favorable at $9.94. The department proposes 20 additional FTE positions. And finally, operating revenue is a proposed $339 million with $195 million to operating expenses and the balance to capital projects, reserves, and debt service. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Hi, Bill.
Okay, great to see you all. And before I turn this over to Brian, maybe just a couple of sort of broad sweeps about what drives our budget. I think you know that in large measure, it's driven by passenger volumes, which have seen quite a roller coaster over the course of the last three years. And I would say generally, we're pretty much back to where we were pre-COVID. In fact, we're a little ahead of that. And interestingly enough, we had a report today from one of our consultants in preparation for the bond sale that is suggesting 3.5% annual compounded growth for the airport, which means by 2030 or so, we would be in the 32 to 33 million annual passenger volume territory, which is pretty remarkable. And I might say way further out there than was ever imagined when the project was put together. Sorry, technical difficulties. All right. Keep going. Kind of hard. The other thing I would say that is really driving this particular budget is that we are now taking possession of more elements of the project in this year. In about less than 30 days, the first five gates open on A Concourse East. And on October 31st, the entire part of A Concourse will open. And that will eliminate something that I'm sure will bring cheers from everyone, which is the hard stand, where you go out to the B Concourse, get on a bus, go to your plane, and vice versa. That'll eliminate that entirely. In fact, my guess is we won't see much of any hard standing in Salt Lake for years ahead. So it's a milestone that we're very much looking forward to. We are in the process now of reviewing bids for the 16-gate expansion, which are surprisingly favorable. We were a bit concerned about a lot of the commodity costs and other changes that have occurred over the course of the last couple of years. And I don't think that's going to be a big challenge. Most of the FTE increases, as you'll hear, are really driven by the fact that we're about to take over larger swaths of responsibility for management. And so not only our own FTEs, but also the contracts for janitorial and related activities because we just have more territory to take care of. So with that, I will turn it over to Brian. If you're, are you ready? Do you need me to stretch this out a little or? Okay.
I guess it just depends. We do have the new city template on the PowerPoint. It looks like we're using an older version. But I believe all the information is still correct just on the old template, if you're ready to move forward. It is last year's.
Mr. Chair, we have a mix up with the presentation, and it doesn't appear to be opening the PowerPoint, the new PowerPoint that we have. So they've got a hard copy of the presentation. If you're amenable, perhaps Brian could start to walk through it, and we'll troubleshoot getting the presentation up on the screen.
Does that sound okay to council members? Let's do that.
Thanks.
Sam, is that there not the right presentation?
That's not the right presentation. Yeah, that's.
So the one that's in the.
Correct, yes.
Prime Gov is also not the right one.
Yeah, we've got to switch that one out. Yeah, we'll take all of it down.
Just making sure.
Sorry about that.
So you want me to go with? I think so, yeah, for now. And then I'll try to pull it up here. Okay. I apologize about that. Hopefully, we can get it pulled up for you. As Bill was mentioning, this is actually a pretty exciting budget for us. It's the first time we've actually added new facilities at the airport since opening back in September and October of 2020. And so as we go through our budget presentation, you're going to see some healthy increases, not only to O and M. You know, Sam kind of talked about different full-time equivalents that we're going to be bringing online. But it's really kind of demand-driven, and it was always anticipated as we were, you know, halfway done building out concourse A and B. And now we're going to be finishing concourse A here on Halloween, that, you know, there would be additional labor, additional contracts for janitorial, and things to that nature coming online. So I'm going to hold up this because I think it's a really cool picture. Hopefully, you can see this. But, and you don't need to see the detail of it, but what it is, is it's an aerial of the airport in February. And where Bill and myself were at the airport every day, it's hard to see the changes on a daily basis. But if you don't go out to the airport on a regular basis, it's just impressive to see that less than two years ago, there used to be a parking garage here. And now we have a fully built-out concourse that we're getting ready to open. And so we do these aerials on a monthly basis. And, you know, to kind of see the progress from month to month, it is really remarkable what the construction teams are accomplishing out there. So every year when we do our budget, we always kind of say, what are the budget drivers? What is important to the airport? And just like public utilities, where they have users, and it's a little bit hard to forecast revenues based on kind of consumption, the way the airport operates is we really rely on the airlines. They're the users of the airports, and they're the ones that really kind of tell us what to expect for any coming year. And so you're going to see this in a couple of slides if we can get it up. But we went to the airlines in January of 2022, and we said, hey, can you please look into your crystal balls and what do you expect activity level to be at the airport? And the high watermark for the airport, as far as passengers starting their journey at Salt Lake City, was 13.1 million passengers. And that was before the pandemic in 2019. For fiscal year '23 that we're just wrapping up, they told us to expect 14.1 million employments. Now, at the time, that was their best guess. We realized that a lot of things have happened in the economy. Airlines are struggling to get pilots to be able to fly the aircraft, even though there's demand for people wanting to travel. They don't have pilots to actually fly the aircraft. And then the other issue is they can't actually get delivery of aircrafts. So you're going to see that although they told us to expect 14.1 million employments in fiscal year '23, we're closer to about 13.2 million employments. But the good news is, is even with less activity, a lot of our non-aeronautical revenues, our parking, the rental cars, that has done very well, even though we don't have as many people traveling through the airport that we anticipated. The other really kind of goal that we had with this presentation or this budget was we're starting to receive a lot of federal funding from Congress. The bipartisan infrastructure law, it set aside $25 billion in one-time funding sources for airports. Now, this is awarded on an annual basis. And every year that we're getting it, we're allocating these to projects. And that's why we're going to talk about a really big capital improvement project because we're starting to get these federal grants, and we're wanting to get them accepted, and we're wanting to bid really big projects associated with that. And then, as Sam mentioned, we are getting ready to go to the bond market this summer. We'll be back to brief the council specifically on that on May 9th. You know, I wish we could have locked in the rates in 2021. They're about 200 basis points higher, and we'll kind of give you a briefing when we go over that. But we've kind of done the affordability analysis, and we're updating the plan of finance for the airport on an annual basis. And even though we're going to be issuing closer to 5%, it's still a very competitive rate for the long-term airport debt financing. So the next slide really, it does kind of talk about the passenger traffic in Salt Lake City. During the pandemic, we kind of said, what kind of recovery is it going to be for the airport? You know, was it going to be a prolonged U-shaped recovery where it was a sharp decline, and then it took a long time for the recovery? Or was it more like a V-shaped recovery? And what we're seeing is it's definitely a V-shaped recovery here. Even though 2023 were lower than what we anticipated, again, we asked the airlines, what did they forecast, or what do they think they'll have in our coming budget year? And again, they're very bullish, and in particular, our primary hub carrier, Delta, you know, they're still telling us to expect around 14.1, 14.2 million employments, which would, again, be another million above the all-time record that we've had at the airport. So the next slide that I have, it's really an income statement forecast. And the goal of the income statement forecast really is to kind of show you, what did we budget for the current budget year, fiscal year '23? Well, based on six months' worth of data when we prepare a lot of our budget data, what do we think we're going to end up for the rest of the fiscal year? And then what are we requesting the following year? And it's a busy slide. I would never go over every single line item. But a couple of points that I will point out is, Sam talked about this, our operating revenue, it went from $295 million budgeted in fiscal year '23 to $340 million. Now, a lot of that, we're going to talk about, is airline-driven revenue. As we're bringing on these new facilities, just like Public Utilities explained, as you have debt service, we put that into the rate base as well. And our users aren't, you know, residential or, you know, commercial users, they're the airlines. And so it goes into the landing fee, and it goes into the terminal rent. The other line item I would point out is we're projecting $106 million in grants that we're planning to receive this coming year. In a typical year, when you don't have all the stimulus funds, it would be closer to $20 million. But it kind of just goes to show you how much money is being awarded specifically to the Salt Lake City Airport. And then at the very bottom of the income statement slide, and I apologize if you're not seeing this firsthand, it really shows you after we have all of our revenues, all of our expenditures, after we pay all the debt service, you know, we pay for the capital equipment, how much money is left for us to put towards capital improvement projects, as well as the actual construction of the airport. Because a large part of the construction of this $5 billion project is actually coming from cash generated by the airport. So in fiscal year '23, we thought we were going to have about $101 million to contribute to all of those capital projects. The forecast, even though we have less users, our expenditures are coming in quite a bit less, it's closer to $155 million. And this coming year, it's going to be closer to $185 million. And this was always planned. It's part of the plan of finance that we have at the airport. It's when we go out to the bond market, we, the investors and the rating agencies, everybody wants to know, how are you going to pay for this $5 billion project? And it's through grants, it's through the airline revenues, it's through the parking revenues, rental cars. Looks like we might be up and running. Thank you, Sam. I appreciate it. So I'm just going to catch us up to where we are. Here's the cool picture that I like to show. Again, this is February, plenty of snow still on the ground out there. But those are going to be the 22 gates that open this Halloween. And so all of those gates, 47 in total on concourse A, will be all Delta gates. And then in a year from now, that's when you're going to get that central tunnel open, so you'll no longer have to make the trek to the Mid-Concourse Tunnel. So this is the V-shaped recovery I was talking about when it comes to employments. This was the really busy slide that I was just kind of picking out some other highlights. One thing I will maybe point out here, you know, a year ago, interest rates, we have a lot of cash that we are investing because we're waiting to pay construction costs. You know, they're around a half percent. It's very easy now to go get a treasury or an agency bond that's paying 4.5%, 5%. And so that's a good news, even though we have to pay higher costs when we borrow funds. We're actually earning a lot more money on that, those investments, as we're waiting to spend it. So this is a really key slide that I want the council just to kind of see. Because the airport, much like the city, has received a lot of federal funding. And we have the traditional CARES Act, CRISA, and ARPA. And by the end of this calendar year, we will have expended all of those grants. And a lot of that is to make up for a lot of the lost revenue, whether it was parking, whether it was rental cars. But we also applied a large portion of that to help reduce the rates and charges that we charge to airlines. Because there was a period of time where they were just losing billions and billions of dollars. And we definitely, we didn't give them all of the relief funds, but we gave them a large share of it. And it allowed them to continue to grow here in Salt Lake City. The last two line items, it's the bipartisan infrastructure law grant. Right now, we're averaging around $25.2 million a year. This is all formula-based by how many passengers you have, how much cargo weight you get. And this gets announced on an annual basis. But we're going to talk about a project that we're going to be using those funds. And this is the very first year that the FAA and the Department of Transportation has ever given any grants to airports related to the actual building of a concourse. Now, there's a lot of restrictions on this. Most of the time we get grants, it's built, it's around the airfield, it's paving, it's around safety. This is the first time we've been awarded funds, and this is going to go directly to the 16-gate expansion that we came to you last fall and asked, you know, for permission to go award those contracts. And so this is just, this is the second round. We got $29 million. There's three more years that we're going to apply for grants. And we're thinking we're going to get anywhere from $80 to $100 million to help offset some of those costs, which would reduce the borrowing costs that we would need to go to the market for. So we like to break down our different revenues. You'll see, again, it's the same format. What did we budget this year? What are we forecasting for this year? And then what is the increase for next year? You'll see that when it comes to airline revenues, bringing on the eastern portion of concourse A brings all the debt that we borrowed against that. And so the terminal rental rates and the landing fees are what's increasing significantly. And again, this has all been forecasted to the airlines. We met with them about a month ago. We previewed our budget. If anyone's going to have questions, they're the ones that dig into it really deeply. They want to know everything that makes up that landing fee and the terminal rent. The good news that Bill mentioned is that hard stands going away mostly come Halloween. Now, that's, we have 20 hard stand positions. And when we tore down the old airport, Delta agreed to lease 15 of those 20 positions. Now that we're opening 22 gates, Delta is going to decommission 15 of those 20 hard stands. But we still have a lot of new entrants coming into Salt Lake City. You know, recently, we've had Spirit, we've had Eurowings, there's some other airlines that we're in talks with. And right now, we're still building gates, and we don't have a place to put them. So what we're having to do is we're having to use these additional five hard stand positions on the north side of concourse B. And those will remain operational, and they're demand-driven through 2027 until we can get all 94 contact gates built. But most of the other airline revenues tend to be pretty consistent year to year.
Councilmember Pietro has a question.
Yes.
Hey, sorry.
No, you're good.
So on the 23 budget for landing fees, we have the 57 in the budget, but only 46 million forecast. But then we go back up to 62. Is there some reason we're so off on the forecast? And is it a one-time exception that we?
So this is one of those good news stories. When it comes to landing fees, we charge the airlines 100% of the cost to operate what we consider the airfield. If we have a really heavy snow year like this year, it doesn't matter if we budgeted 3.5 million for chemicals, and it costs us $5 million to keep the runways plowed. We say this is the actual cost to operate the airfield. The reality is, and you're going to see this later, we're about $15 or $16 million under what we had budgeted for fiscal year '23. And so a portion of that really is related to the airfield or the cost associated with the landings and takeoff of the aircraft. And so we're forecasting that we actually don't need to charge the airlines as much for landing fees this year.
The other thing that affects landing fees are the actual aircraft size, which has changed dramatically over the last three years. I mean, up and down and sideways. And so when we move into A Concourse East, a lot of those smaller planes, in fact, the Canada Air Regional Jets, the 50-seaters, are going away completely from Salt Lake City. We'll still see some of the Embraer's, but they're basically going to handle the increasing passenger volumes by upgauging their aircraft, which means their share of landed weights will probably go up.
Okay, thank you. That was actually a really good question and one I meant to point out. So the next slide really is everything outside of what the airlines pay the airport. And so these are our concession revenues. And you're going to see, the thing that sticks out and was surprising even to myself, is we had budgeted $53 million in parking revenue for fiscal year '23. The reality is, is it's closer to $58 million. And then this coming year, we're projecting $61 million. I know we recently had spring break at the airport, and we were full. There just wasn't any spots left, you know? And this is with, you know, off-airport parking providers, building additional facilities. You know, we're definitely looking into it as well. I will point out, just so the council's aware, we are proposing a $2 increase only to the long-term economy lot. Right now, we charge $10 a day to park in the long-term economy lot. We're going to go to 12. And the rationale for that, part of it's demand-driven, we're out of parking. The reality is, we don't think a $2 increase is really going to affect demand at the airport. The real reason for increasing the rates is, it's been five years, and back before COVID, shuttle drivers were making $17 an hour. Shuttle drivers are now making $22 to $23 an hour, starting out at the airport. We have not raised the rates in the economy lot. And so this is one of those where if you don't do it for seven or 10 years, and all of a sudden you have a $5 increase, it's a lot more painful than a smaller increase of just $2. So that does go into the consolidated fee schedule, but we did want to point that out.
Great. I think Councilmember Puy has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. So $2 increase on the economy, why not go a little higher than that and, you know, make sure that we have a little more funding for parking, since we are going to be funding more parking most likely, or there's a request for more parking, surface parking on the airport? So if the goal here is to try to also discourage some of the parking, and many of us live on a tracks line, or, you know, and we, many of us still drive to the airport, so why not go a little, is there a rationale for only the $2, maybe go into like $3 or $4?
So there's a lot of strategy around pricing in airport parking, and Salt Lake is unique in many respects. But one is the, just the sheer amount of off-airport parking that doesn't belong to the airport. And if you drive out north temple towards the airport, after you cross under I-15, the bridge, just look to your left, basically, they're more than doubling the volume of space. And these parkers, these long-term parkers are really their target audience. And so you got to be somewhat competitive with that. I would say, we haven't really focused on a decision here, the garage is, I would say, due for an increase. It is significantly more expensive, it's a better product, obviously, because it's closer to the airport, and the amount of money that we would generate would be far greater, and it would be for precisely that purpose, to continue to make those investments. And it's, this is kind of a new era, to be honest, because airport parking prices around the country, I can tell you from my colleagues in this business, it's a very, it's a hot topic, or historically, it's been a very hot topic. You raise rates, everybody goes crazy. Now you raise rates, and it almost doesn't make any difference, which is a really surprising development, except that it obviously generates more resources. So the long-term increase was basically aimed at cost recovery, to pay for the increases in wages that we've had to pay the CDL bus drivers, who, you know, four years ago were making 17 an hour, are now making 22, 23 an hour. And we don't want to lose them, because they're very hard to find, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Dugan, and then Councilmember Fowler.
Thanks, thanks for the discussion on the parking, because that leads me to my next question about working with UTA and public transportation out to the airport. And could you give us an update on where we are in increasing the front-runner and just the bus traffic out there? If there's, if there has been any discussions with UTA and their services?
Well, you understand, there is regular and constant interaction with UTA on all kinds of subjects, because the tracks is a, obviously is a major commitment. And, you know, I think, I would just summarize it by saying, they don't see a lot of opportunity to increase, you know, the sort of parking we would like to develop is for employee parking. And there just isn't a sufficient concentration in any one location to make a really huge difference. I think that the interaction, the conversation is quite good with UTA. And the biggest challenge that we have currently at the airport, and this is with really all the employers, the Department of Airports is, I don't know, probably sixth on the list of a sized employer, so it's not really as much us as it is the airlines and concessionaires and others, are really struggling to find people. And I think we've kind of concluded there are two problems, three problems. One is just the labor market is tough right now, and I think everybody is aware of that. Secondly, if you get a job at the airport, you also have to get a badge, and it takes two weeks. And surprisingly enough, in that two-week period, people just go, eh, I'm going somewhere else, you know, which happens. And then finally, when you get a really tight labor market, the percentage of people who can qualify for a badge declines, to be blunt, I don't know how else to put it. And so we, for example, have a very difficult time finding airfield equipment operators, the people who drive the snowplows. We're typically down 20% in that workforce, so it's very challenging. But we will always work closely with UTA on any prospects for improvements in transit service. I will say during the All-Star Game, the tracks connection was tremendous, and probably had its highest all-term, all-time use. And that's because tracks goes directly to where basically everybody was going, so it was very, it was very good.
Just one follow-up real quick, Mr. Chair. On the, you know, we threw out the idea about the airlines funding the, like, a free transportation out there with their ticket, just like we do, the youths do it for the football games and stuff like that. Was that, like, unfeasible, or was that still out there in the idea world?
So it'd have to be, the airlines would all have to agree and do that voluntarily. We are not permitted, we could not legally impose that on them, so they'd have to agree. And having done this for 23 years now, I think that would be a tough sell.
Mr. Chair, I'm curious to this question about visits to Salt Lake, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Fowler. Visits to Salt Lake, and, you know, we are talking to them, or they're talking to us about, you know, their programs, and how could they, with UTA, come up with a plan to incentivize some of these conventions that come to Salt Lake to use public transportation? So maybe we need to also talk to them about this same idea.
I think Councilmember Fowler had a comment first, and then Councilmember Fadlam Ross.
I work now. So going back to something that Councilmember Pooey mentioned, and raising the rates, and maybe raising the rates, and look, parking isn't just an issue for the airport. It's for everyone. The amount of time that I've been sitting here and have heard about parking throughout anywhere, ever, always, is literally every meeting. However, I, in conjunction with what Councilmember Pooey has said, what Councilmember Dugan has said, what we talked a lot about last year is this increase in public transportation, right? This, this need and, and the need to move to public transportation. And sometimes we have to incentivize by, by saying it's going to be more expensive to park here. And I just think, I mean, just idea off the top of my head, if that were the case, and we were able to do some of that where people, travelers, started to take more of that public transportation, where we almost made it somewhat inconvenient, then maybe we wouldn't have to spend $61 million on surface parking. We could lower that, and maybe lower some of the stalls and not take up all of that, right? So this is where this conversation started a year and a half ago. And looking at the budget of, you know, which conservatively would be about 14, well, about 1,300 stalls, with inflation probably a little bit less than that. But, you know, I think there's other ways to just look at, at these things, and how each one sort of impacts the other one.
Yeah, I think part of our challenge, of course, is that right across the street, on land that is, you know, under the jurisdiction of the city, the parking supply is doubling, which means those people, they're not taking transit, they're just parking somewhere else. And that money is not contributing to the operation of the airport. And that's obviously a big concern for us.
Councilmember Fadlam Ross.
I think I have to go with my colleagues here, a little bit, trying to play the advocate. I think, I'm not worried that people will, that we'll have competition from another parking lot, because we are the closest one, like, in the long-term one, other than the one that we have right across the street from the airport. So I'm okay, like, I would reconsider the $2 to go a little bit higher, because we're leading on the, in that sense. Like, I'm not worried, I'm not worried that people will park somewhere else, because people will pay for convenience. People, I will pay for convenience. And I don't know if anybody here, like, I have people saying, yeah, I will pay for convenience. The closest, if I can get closer, I'll pay a little bit more, so I'm not worried about that. So maybe take another, if possible, take another look and see if we can do that. The other thing I was thinking about, I know Delta, one of the airlines, is really interested in the environment and community. I mean, they showed it last week when we went to plant trees. So is there another in with airlines and their environmental responsibility to, you know, to talk to them once again and reconsider this idea of maybe providing some incentive for people to use public transit with the environment in mind? Because I know they want to do the right thing, so I don't see why they wouldn't think about it. At this time, you know, at this point in life, like, you know, we're, Salt Lake City, we all are aware about our air quality issues, and so I think they've demonstrated that they're interested, so I would like to explore that again, another round of, like, this is what the council is interested, can we have another conversation about public transportation?
Well, so I, you know, we meet with their real estate group monthly, basically, and talk about a wide range of issues. And I will, I'll happily put this on the table with them again, they have a much clearer picture about where their passengers go when they're coming to Salt Lake than we do. So they'll have a sense about whether transit would, you know, how that would work for the bulk of them. I think that Councilmember Pooey's notion with visits to Salt Lake is a very good one, because those are obvious candidates for public transit. Somebody who's coming here for a convention, this is a community that I would say overperforms on convention and visitor activity. And those are folks who are going straight into the heart of the, one of the best transit-served regions in the state. So I think that's an option as well, but I'll happily talk to them again about this.
Councilmember Petro.
I think it's worth noting that the parking that we're talking about here is for passengers, whereas the last parking lot that we talked about was for employees. And so the axis along which equity is considered, very rarely, with a few exceptions, are there less options for passengers. Even when I was broke and saved all my money to make a trip, I always had a friend who could drop me off, even if I couldn't, wasn't on transit. So I think this, considering whether or not we're concerned people are going to park in other places is probably a viable consideration, and maybe we should have small group discussions about this to go a little deeper into the economics of passenger parking versus making sure our employees, who oftentimes need equitable considerations because of their income brackets, are being considered in the correct lights for each of them. I'm going to divert, is there a reason our food, beverage, and retail are so much lower? Like, I have no idea why people don't shop, ARPA Airport is the only place I want to shop. I'm angry when I go to other airports.
No, that's a very astute observation, one I was going to bring up. It's going to look like it's really low. The reality is, is we had a part of the ARPA grant relief, we were awarded $11 million to provide relief to our concession partners. So it was distributed about equally, five and a half between food and beverage and five and a half between retail, which was key, because we were able to waive rents for over three months for all of these individuals, these corporations. And they're getting ready to build out million-dollar spaces on Concourse A East. So to give them three months where we said, we're not going to collect a dime, because the FAA is basically giving us 11 million, it doesn't show up in food and beverage and retail, it shows up in grants. But a very key point that you noticed.
Councilmember Pooey, go ahead.
Oh, you skipped yourself, thank you. So I just wanted to mention that, you know, I would love to be in the small group meetings as well on this. I also would like to, you know, dig in on the concept of people will park more, more on the park-and-ride. They do also have a limit, right? They, you know, how much, how many cars they can take. And still, people will probably prefer to park closer to the airport than doing the park-and-ride. But I think this is like for smart people to do a market analysis of this. Obviously, I think that, you know, the airport growing needs more parking, but I also want us to keep on this idea that we need to explore all alternatives also, as well. So thank you for that.
I would say we have a very deep dive on the competition. We know a lot about them, who uses them. And there are very regular, they have some very regular customer base, because, among other things, they get dropped off at the front door of the airport. And for some people, that's an advantage, as opposed to parking in a far-out airport lot and waiting for the shuttle to come around. You go over to the parking spot, you park undercover, you get there, your car, if you want, gets washed, you get the oil changed, and you get dropped off and picked up at the front door of the airport. So, you know, they've figured out what their business model is, and our staff, our grand transportation staff, have a really, I would say, deep understanding about who that is, and we would be happy to share that in some more appropriate form.
Bill, I just want to, we harped a lot on this additional parking lot and the parking fees. And I think that there's, from a business perspective, looking at the airport as a business that needs to bring in revenue in order to support its operations, I can see why you're making the argument for we don't, we want to be competitive with the other people. But from an environmental perspective, looking at the fact, you just said that, like, other people are building more parking lots off-site. I don't think that means, to me, that doesn't mean we need to compete with them and build more parking onsite, because overall, we want less parking and more public transit. And the argument that we're making is an environmental argument, there's already so much impact that the airport brings to our air quality, that let's just at least minimize it where we can. So yes, we may start to lose revenue from that, but let's look at other ways to, to overcome that revenue gap from parking. In an ideal world, we wouldn't be making money from parking, because parking harms our environment. Does that make sense? So let's, let's, I think it's a fundamental shift away from parking, parking brings in money, to let's not induce more demand in parking, because it's harming the environment.
Councilmember Wharton.
I just want to ask about my favorite topic with the airport, and that is the train or people movers in the tunnel. Can you remind us where we are on that? And then, yeah, if you can just give an update on that, since, again, it's the most asked question that I get, aside from parking, and, yeah, parking and homelessness, I think this is number three.
At the airport?
Yes.
Okay, well, we.
No, not parking and homelessness at the airport. Sorry, sorry.
I mean, I'll go there if you want to.
No, 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 no. Issue number one, parking. Issue number two, homelessness. Issue number three. Yes, the airport's tunnel.
Yeah, the tunnel, the central tunnel opens in the fall of next year, right? So a concourse east in, on October 31st of this year, the following fall, the central tunnel opens. And I think the, the train will not really, is very unlikely to open, I think, until there is a concourse C. And I would also say, if people think that's the thing that's going to make a difference for them, they're probably wrong. It's a 900-foot stretch. It is the length of the concourses that makes a big difference. We've authorized the airlines, who have a consortium to provide services that they all consume, to evaluate, they, so they, this consortium provides the wheelchair service currently. And we've authorized them to look at carts on the concourse. They're not interested in doing that until a concourse east is completely open, because of liability reasons, to be honest. So I am quite confident that when the central tunnel opens, and you don't have to walk a half a mile out of your way, basically, to get to where you're going, it's going to make a huge difference. So, you know, when is the C concourse going to be built? Brian hates it when I talk about this, because it's obviously a big financial commitment. But if that 3.5% annual compound growth number is right, it's going to be a lot sooner than anybody thinks, at which point the train would be completed.
Well, I think last year, we were also talking about how you, you were trying to, you couldn't find enough people or pay people enough to help people that have mobility issues to do a wheelchair option, things like that. What's, has that changed in the last year?
Has improved quite a bit. They still have huge turnover, but... Has improved quite a bit. They still have huge turnover, but they have a crew of about 300 people regularly on their payroll. So you don't find people having to wait as long anymore. Particularly if you have a reservation, it's almost, it's guaranteed. So it's improved quite a bit. I would say that kind of the employment situation generally at the airport has improved somewhat. But in that particular case, it's improved a lot. And even though I have neighbors whose son, I said, go push a wheelchair at the, you know, airport, you make good money, and you will. And he did it for like, three days and just decided that's not in my future, you know? And I think that's the challenge they raise. But they, you know, if you push a wheelchair at the airport, you make $15 an hour plus tips. And the tips are substantial. So it's good money, it's just hard to find folks. But they're doing quite a bit better than they were originally.
They just hired one of my teenagers, though, Sophie No Teenagers.
Oh, that, yeah. I was going to say, maybe we take the train that we had with the buckets from Liberty Park, we put that in the tunnel. I mean-
We will have carts in the tunnel.
Okay.
There will be electric carts. But the train itself, it really just doesn't make sense to open that to operate only between A and B.
Right. Well, I mean, anything that you can do to, to address the mobility issues because it, in the interim, and I understand the concern about, you know, liability issues. I don't know if there's a way to like, section off a part so that, you know, you're doing wheelchairs or you're doing the, I don't know what you call it, like shuttle or little cart or whatever. But again, it just, it's something that I hear constantly. And, and I think that as we're talking about these other equitable issues, that that, for people with mobility, that is, is a really significant impediment for them. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wharton.
So real quick, I would just extend the invite. I know I did this with Councilmember Dugan, Fowler, and Pui. We went down into the central tunnel, and I actually took them into the train cells. And I kind of showed them the distance between the train platforms and the actual distance you'd be saving. Since you hear about this all the time, we would love you and any other council members that would want a personalized tour of what the tunnel would look like, the potential savings you would have. It's, it sounds great. But like Bill said, going to Concourse C is, that's when you're really going to want the train to be there. It's all being built.
Yeah. Well, but I guess what I, I hope you'll hear is that, like, I can't sit down and tell a resident that's telling me that, that that's not a problem.
Right. I understand.
And that, that your perception that something would help you with a few steps is wrong. I have to, you know, hear that feedback. And, and I think the general thing is, you know, yes, I would love to have a train. I think that that would help. But I'm not wedded to the train idea. I just, we have to do something to, to address the mobility concerns in the long and short term.
After we split the traffic up, this is the most important thing, frankly, because now every single passenger goes through security, walks out to the plaza, and turns left.
Right.
And so at 10:00 in the morning, on a day when we have 28,000, 30,000 people at the front door, it's a sea of humanity. When, on the 16th of May coming, the first five gates open, all of a sudden, you're going to see fewer people. Then next October, many fewer people on the A Concourse. And that opens up some additional mobility options. And then when the central tunnel opens, that'll make a huge difference. So part of it is time. And also, I would say, mixed in with this is the unpleasantness of the hard stand. Not only do you have to walk, you know, to Park City in order to get there, you, you have to go way out of your way. And that'll end soon. It's coming. And, and I think that'll make a very big difference.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I know we're out of time.
Yeah, how many more slides?
I can run through them really quick. It's really just the operating expenses, and there's really a highlight slide I'll cover, and then just the capital projects. I know we've talked about parking. But I'll just reiterate, we hear you. We'll definitely take it back, and we'll discuss what you've kind of brought to our attention.
I'm all about higher rates, too.
Yeah. So, so real quick, in the airport's budget, you're going to see that we have a $13 million increase for fiscal year '24. The way it's broken out is we're requesting 20 new airport employees. The impact on our budget is 2.4 million. We are including 1.2 million for six new additional police officers, plus some additional cost of living adjustments that have been lagging in the airport's budget. We have 355,000 reserved for the fire department. That does include bringing on a training captain, as well as having four medical response teams actually located in the concourse so they can quickly respond. With the proposed cost of living adjustment that the city's proposing, along with the cost of insurance, it's 5.1 million for all airport employees. Bringing on these additional gates, it's about $4.5 million to be able to clean those facilities. We also have a central receiving distribution center where all of the goods, all of the food, gets screened. The demand is just so much higher that they're actually requesting 650,000 to have additional staffing for that. And then, as Bill mentioned, the hard stand's going away, so we'll actually have a cost savings of 3.4 million. We're not going to go over our cost per employment. I think Sam did a good job explaining that. This is a capital equipment slide. We're budgeting 12 million. You can kind of see what's new equipment, what's replacement. I will point out, there is $3 million for four electric shuttle buses that would be used in the landside operations. There are grants available for airports. This is one of those that we're actively pursuing so we can continue the electrification of the airport campus. And then lastly, the capital improvement program, it's $176 million. What you're going to see, and you can kind of see how it's funded, is you really have two major projects. We've already kind of hit on the parking one. But we have, of the $125 million in bipartisan infrastructure grants, we're using a large portion of that to build to the north of Concourse B, a taxiway, Uniform and Victor. And there's two different things associated with it. We actually have to create a tunnel so the aircraft can go over the roadway, and we got to do the roadway realignment. And then that's what we're requesting this year. We're also requesting the design of actually designing the taxiways. So that's, accounts for 95 million of it. We talked about getting utilities out to the Tooele Valley Airport. And then we kind of talked about the, the South Employee Parking Lot. I will just remind the council, by proceeding with this, it does save the general fund millions and millions of dollars by the airport actually fixing all of the levy violations that were incurred in the past. So that is part of the project. It's not just parking, it is actually relocating the surplus canal associated with it. And then the airport's very committed to the electrification, so we have additional EV charging stations going in. We've had lots of conversations, rental cars, they want to get EV charging, all of those out there. But happy to have separate discussions when it comes to parking in smaller groups if that would please the council. So with that, happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Councilmembers, are we ready to move on? Okay. Thank you. We're moving on to item number five. This is an informational briefing from the Jordan River Commission, and they will be presenting their blueprint, Jordan River. We are seven minutes behind, so not too bad. But we are not ahead of schedule. Oh, let's-
Let's take a three-minute break. Five-minute break. We, we need a bathroom break.
We have Soren Simonsen here from the Jordan River Commission to present the blueprint, Jordan River. Just wanted to quick mention, we wanted to add some things to this West Side meeting that related to the West Side. to this West Side meeting that related to the West Side. So the next two items are specific to things happening on the West Side of our city. So Soren, feel free to present. We are a few minutes, about 18 minutes behind schedule. So go quick if you can, but we're excited to have you. Thanks.
We'll try and get through this as quickly as we can. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council for the opportunity to join you this afternoon. I am going to share with you what we call our Blueprint Jordan River Refresh. Many of you may be familiar with the Blueprint Jordan River. It was created, the original blueprint was created in 2008 through an effort that was led by Salt Lake County and all of the cities and counties that touched the Jordan River. There were at the time 15, there's now 16 cities that have some connection with the Jordan River since Mill Creek Incorporated a few years ago, and three counties. We know you're really interested in your part of the Jordan River here in Salt Lake City, but we'll try and give you an overview of what's happening and what we're working toward across the entire Jordan River watershed. We want to just acknowledge those that were involved with this update. So back in 2018, we pursued some grant funds from the Transportation Land Use Connection Grant Program of Wasatch Front Regional Council, which we were awarded together in partnership with Salt Lake County. We brought Envision Utah back as a lead consultant and also worked with a consulting team with some subject matter experts to do an update. We thought a decade into our work to implement the Blueprint Jordan River was a good time to check back in and see what progress we were making, maybe things that had changed, new challenges and opportunities. And just want to thank all of those that participated. We have had over 8,000 members of the community across the Wasatch Front that participated, probably close to 200 advisors through focus groups and technical committees, as well as some great partners, including Wasatch Front Regional Council, UDOT, Salt Lake County, and the Utah Transportation Association, as well as a number of funding partners that are identified on this slide. Let's see. There we go. Just a little bit of background for those that may not be familiar with the Jordan River. This is a really unique body of water in Utah. It's about 50 miles in length. It connects Utah's two largest lakes, Utah Lake, a freshwater lake. The river then leaves Utah Lake at the north end, flows through portions of Salt Lake, all of, I mean, Utah, all of Salt Lake County, and portions of Davis County before it empties into Great Salt Lake in the Farmington Bay Area. Of course, a lot of the river is diverted at various points along the way for agricultural and historic industrial uses. The largest of those diversions in Salt Lake City is the Jordan River Surplus Canal, which also connects to wetland areas west of the International Airport. Just a little bit of background, the many communities across the country are doing what we've been doing here, which is rediscovering the amazing resources in these bodies of water, rivers. This is a smaller river than many large cities have. It's also not at the center of the city. It doesn't flow through a downtown like, say, the Truckee River in Reno, or the San Antonio River, or the Ohio River. It is a river, though, that's very connected to many communities, and particularly here on the West Side of Salt Lake, has a lot of history. We have thousands of years of human history around the river as well, and we're working to try and bring some of that history forward and really help re-center the river as a center of community and culture, as it has been through thousands of years of human history. We've highlighted in the blueprint some of the progress that was made around recreation. I think one of the most notable accomplishments during those years of the, since the Blueprint Jordan River was completed in 2008, was the connection of the continuous trail from Utah Lake to Center Street in North Salt Lake. So about a 46-mile trail. It doesn't extend past the Legacy Nature Preserve, but it does connect a lot of communities together. There've been great improvements around water quality through projects that have, that are currently in process to improve water reclamation facilities, a lot of efforts, including some that Salt Lake City's been leading on, to help manage and mitigate the impacts of stormwater, which is one of the largest or the greatest water quality impairments today. This is probably the most impaired water body in the state, and not surprisingly, because Salt Lake City and North Salt Lake are at the bottom of the watershed, you see and feel those impacts a lot more than many communities do. The refresh of the Blueprint Jordan River included a lot of outreach. As I mentioned, we had work groups that reviewed the previous blueprint, that reviewed a lot of the public input that came along the way. We had a three-day online public focus group that included about 150 stakeholders that were just interested in what was happening. We had an online survey that was completed in the summer of 2020, which was available both in Spanish and English. And then we had subject matter expert working groups that took feedback from the public, a lot of review of the work that we're doing, and created this update to the blueprint. A couple of things that are probably not big surprises among some of the priorities that we saw from the public is that natural open space, both publicly accessible open space and limited access open space, were among the highest priorities for the Jordan River. But that doesn't mean that there weren't other opportunities, and we have one actually right here in this area where we're meeting today near the Fair Park, that was identified as a place for urban development around the river, that it may not be a natural corridor like in Murray or North Salt Lake. It might be something that's very different, more like the Truckee River in downtown Reno, or the San Antonio River. And so there's some opportunities that are emerging. There's a lot of development areas around the river, and we call these village river centers, and we see these emerging in places like South Jordan, the Point in Draper, and other places that are seeing very large developments happening near the river. The other thing that was really important in the perceptions from the public is the importance of the Jordan River. Although there's a lot of mixed reviews about cleanliness and access to recreation and access to the trail and other things, almost without exception, people were really interested and saw the Jordan River as being very important, whether that's for recreation, for the natural resource values, for wildlife and other things. That was a very common thing that we saw. I'm going to go through this next series of slides and just give you kind of a high-level overview of some of the outcomes of this refreshed Blueprint Jordan River. It's divided into seven sections, and these relate to some of the major areas of focus and emphasis that came out of our survey. These include habitat and natural systems, water in the river, comfort and inclusivity, recreation, safety and well-being, development and transportation, and communication, education, and art. I'll just touch briefly on kind of the high-level goals in each of these areas, and feel free to ask any questions along the way, or we can hold the questions for the end. One of the major goals, which is consistent with the blueprint in 2008, is to protect and preserve natural open space. This was a very high value for people across the Wasatch Front. There's also a lot of interest in optimizing habitats and natural ecosystems. There were some new goals that came out of this blueprint, and these include things like developing plans to monitor and evaluate the success of this plan, providing resources to private landowners. A lot of the original blueprint focused on public lands and lands that are managed by public entities, parks and recreation, both county and municipal lands. And there was a lot of interest in seeing more resources developed and provided to private property owners with lands near the Jordan River or near parks and open space, to become better partners in providing and supporting wildlife and other kinds of features. And then also developing some robust adaptive management strategies. We know that we're seeing impacts of climate change. Just in the last 12 months, we've seen historic drought. We're right now in the midst of experiencing these historic precipitation levels and snowpack in the mountains. And so we're seeing in very close proximity, these real extremes that are exacerbated by climate change. And so developing the river in ways where it's very urbanized, but also still serves important functions like conveying floodwater and things like that, become a real critical part of managing this river system. Another goal is to use a coordinated watershed approach to improving water quality. I'm happy to announce that just a week ago, the Jordan River Commission was designated through a conditional approval to become also the Jordan River Watershed Council. The original blueprint focused very narrowly on just the river corridor and the immediate surroundings, but we realized that things like water quality and water quantity are much bigger than that narrow corridor of the river and really take into account the entire watershed. And so one of the goals that came out of, or one of the strat, one of the objectives that came out of this update was to look at creeks and canals, both that are inputs to the Jordan River and that are diversions away from the Jordan River. It's all part of a connected system. We're really pleased to see the focus from the Utah Legislature and the federal government with recent appropriations to study the Great Salt Lake watershed. And we know that the Jordan River as one of the major tributaries to the Great Salt Lake will play a really key role in understanding these complex water systems that have been developed over the last 200 years or so. Looking at managing river flows and natural river functions, I know over the last couple of months, I've had the opportunity to meet with several of you to talk about your planning of the North Point area. And a key part of that is understanding some of these hydrologic functions. One of the things that we've observed since the floods in the 1980s is that many areas that have in the past served as floodplains have been developed, including here in Salt Lake City, where the floodplains have been elevated through fill and developed. And those change the dynamics of the river in ways that can create new challenges for us. Over the last couple of summers, as we've seen some of the monsonal rains and these heavy runoff that come, almost like flash floods because of all of the impervious surface across the Jordan River watershed, areas that have not historically, in the last 20 or 30 years, been impacted by floodwaters are now being impacted. And we get calls, water lapping up to the doors of businesses and apartments in areas that are close to the river. So understanding the dynamics of a natural system like this and being able to respond and respect those natural functions of both extreme drought and extreme water levels are things that we need to learn to adapt to and perhaps make some reparation. This project pictured here is one of these really incredible projects that's happening in West Jordan through a very extensive partnership that includes federal partners, county, the city of West Jordan as a major leader. About 70 acres of land that have been acquired over many years is being developed into a nature park and preserve that will reestablish, I think, for the first time, really in the history of the Jordan River, where new floodplain is being created as opposed to floodplain being filled in. And this is a really important part of some of the work that we're doing to encourage and emphasize how important things like this are. This project will reintroduce both floodplain and new meandering corridor of the river in an area that has been heavily industrialized and channelized over the last century and a half. Another area is moving kind of into the next area of comfort and inclusivity, includes things like making the parkway welcoming for visitors of all abilities, backgrounds, and circumstances. This is part of how we feel re-centering the river as this connective thread. If you think about the cultural and ethnic, political, and other kind of diversity that happens along the length of the Jordan River, we see just incredible unanimity in people using the river as a place to come together. And so we're really encouraged with parks and open space, trails and access, and all of these things that make this a place that's inclusive of people of all different backgrounds and abilities. One of the new goals that came out of this is to really look at some of those early elements of the Jordan River Trail that maybe weren't designed ideally for people that may use adaptive equipment, wheelchairs, or come in bicycles and things like that. We're also really excited about some development that's happening right now around the water trail that will make it easy for somebody in a wheelchair to be able to get in the river and paddle using adaptive equipment down in the West Valley City area. We're also looking at ways that we can provide consistent and comprehensive maintenance. We're very grateful for ongoing grant funds that we've received through a permanent appropriation from the state that now fund a full-time volunteer coordinator on our staff, and we work literally with thousands of volunteers throughout the year. It was a little bit disrupted during the pandemic, but we're very excited. Many cities are developing their own volunteer programs to support and extend the efforts of what we can do with our commission. We're really excited about the Jordan River Cleanup that will be happening this coming Saturday on Earth Day, and there are several communities that are doing similar programs this week as well. This is a new goal. We've seen since Operation Rio Grande a few years ago, just a large growth in the unsheltered population around the Jordan River. We completed a study just a little over a year ago, trying to identify the reasons that people are camping and living around the Jordan River and trying to understand ways that as a community, we can support their needs. We know that this is a long-term strategy and that there's work that both the city and the counties and the state are doing to address homelessness. But we also know that the impacts on the Jordan River are very real, and supporting those that need help and assistance where we have capacity issues will continue to create challenges around the river. And this includes water quality. We just recently finished a study by the Division of Water Quality that looks at Ecoli levels in the Jordan River, and we know that homelessness around the Jordan River is a major contributor to one of these major contaminants. So there is a lot of interest among the unsheltered community in becoming stewards of the river, and we're looking at ways that we can do that through social service providers and outreach teams, so that they can become a part of helping to keep the river corridor clean and safe and habitable for wildlife. We're also looking at opportunities for recreation that go, or the Jordan River beyond just recreation, to become really a core part of the active transportation system. Some of you may be familiar that the Jordan River is part of an interstate trail system that has recently been designated. Similar to interstate highways, there is work now to create an interstate trail network, and the Jordan River is a key part of that trail network that's now designated as a federally recognized interstate trail system in the US. We're also seeing tremendous opportunity for the Jordan River Trail to become part of this first-mile, last-mile infrastructure. We have new public transit systems that are being developed, the new Mid Valley Connector that connects, tracks stations in Murray and West Jordan, I mean, sorry, in West Valley City, will cross the Jordan River, and that's a major new transit system. Just a few weeks ago, it was announced that we'll have a new frontrunner station near the Jordan River at the Point in Draper, and we're really excited about these new connections that are emerging as well. There's a lot of opportunities for just expansion of that, and much of the work we're doing right now through grants and programs and supporting our Jordan River Commission partners are to enhance connectivity. We're really excited that later this year, probably in the early summer, the party's trail system will be connected to the Jordan River, which is under construction right now. And just recently, the Point was also awarded $108 million. That will include the range to river connection from the Bonneville Shoreline Trail to the Jordan River Trail in Draper as well. Some other goals that I want to just highlight here, this is a brand-new goal, looking at things related to wildfire risk. We've seen a lot of wildfires popping up along the Jordan River Parkway. Some of that's related to weed management, because fragmites can become very combustible in the fall, when the weather's dry and the weeds become very dry as well. We've had, I think, the last three or four summers, easily six or seven wildfires along the Jordan River, including some here in Salt Lake City. So that's a concern, and we're looking at ways to manage the weeds in a better way to mitigate some of those risks. Looking at ways to, again, highlight the regional transportation connections. This is a regional corridor. In May, we'll be hosting our sixth annual Golden Spoke event, which highlights this connected system all the way from Provo to Ogden, of which the Jordan River Trail is kind of the central connecting thread for that large, almost 170 miles of connected trail systems across the Wasatch Front. We're also looking at ways to integrate transit into, integrate, integrate the parkway into the transit system. I mentioned several key projects that are underway now and coming in the future. We want to look at ways of We want to look at ways of highlighting development at the river's edge. And again, this area here where we are right now is one of these areas with the future development of the Fair Park, the Rocky Mountain Power, which just broke ground now and their new headquarters right at the river's edge, Fisher Mansion, the CW Urban Project where Mark Steel Industrial Site used to be. There's a lot happening in this area, and we want to see this area really become this river-focused development area. And we're here to support your efforts as a city to help ensure that that happens. Looking at ways to promote harmony between infrastructure and the river, I think most of you are very familiar with the Three Creeks Confluence. This is one of several projects where we're looking at enhancing areas that are somewhat urbanized but can expand natural functions. This project added new floodplain in an area where there's a lot of floodwater coming down. I think that lower path is probably underwater right now, and that adds some capacity for these high water times. We're also looking at ways to bring communication about the Jordan River through events and festivals. We're really excited about the Range to River Relay that we partner with Seven Canyons Trust, the Get to the River Festival, which Salt Lake City is just a really wonderful partner to bring people to the river to better understand what's happening here, how to get involved with stewardship opportunities as volunteers, how to promote and how to activate areas that bring community and culture back to the river as well. We are, in the coming months, going to be beginning work on converting our mobile site, myjordanriver.org, into a mobile app that will add functionality for crowdsourcing, reporting of things that need responding to. We know Salt Lake City already has a very robust application for reporting things around the city. This will add to that by giving people an opportunity to report things around the river across the entire 50-mile corridor, kind of building on some of your success as a municipality. We're also looking at opportunities for experiential learning. There are about 30 schools that are located within about a half-mile. Of course, in Salt Lake City, you have many schools right at the river's edge, in Rose Park in Glendale. And it's exciting to see students connecting with this natural resource. Next week, we'll be conducting Canoe Mobile with a number of partners that will get students out of their classrooms and into the Jordan River. We hope that it will be safe and not flooding at that point. But we know that these experiences to get their hands dirty, learning about monitoring, learning about wildlife, learning about impacts on the river from urbanization, learning about how to get involved in shaping the systems that will improve the river, are all wonderful learning experiences. We think it's fantastic that so many communities are embracing art and cultural opportunities around the river, from the Golina-Suncani Preserve, which recognizes all seven tribes in, federally recognized tribes in Utah, to the most recent art installation, which is the fish sculptures at the new boat launches in Salt Lake City. These are just really wonderful opportunities to reflect and highlight the community and culture that we see here around the Jordan River. That's my overview of the Blueprint Jordan River. I'm happy to respond to any questions that you might have. We thank you for your interest in what's happening around the river and for being part of this commission that brings all the communities around the Jordan River together in really wonderful and unique ways.
Thank you, Soren. Councilmembers, any questions?
I have some questions. No, no, no. So, I thank you, Soren, for the presentation and the work that you guys do to highlight and to help with the river and the communities around it. I just saw the, there's a lot of goals here, and one of those was related to the app, the app that you, you guys are developing. How is the app connected with city services since many of the agencies that respond to calls in the, in the river are, is the city? So, wouldn't that duplicate, doesn't need to, I guess the question is, do you need your own app? And could, you know, we work together? Because if you receive in the app, a call from, you know, an issue related to homelessness, for example, you will have to now submit it to the proper channels to the city for the rapid intervention team or the chat team or all the other services that the city provides on this. So, how is that connection going to happen so it's seamless for the neighbors? And, you know, many neighbors are frustrated sometimes about that response. So, if they're contacting you or they're contacting us, I just want to make sure that there is, that we are responding quickly, as fast as we can, and the calls, all the calls are not missed. So, just a little quick question on that.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. We haven't started development of the app yet. I will say, we currently have a mobile site, myjordanriver.org. It's designed to work with mobile devices, but it has some limitations because it's just a standard website. We think that the app will give us more function, especially, you know, one of the primary purposes of the app is not necessarily the reporting functions, although that's a really important part of this crowdsourcing. We actually use it a lot for people to record experiences, to take photos, to share things that they're learning. There are a lot of interpretive signs along the Jordan River, and like many of you that have probably been to museums where you look at an exhibit and then on your mobile device, it pops up with all these resources. We're looking at the app to have a lot of different features, of which reporting is a core function, but it's not the primary function of the app. I think we are very interested in looking at how it interfaces. Many of the municipalities across the Jordan River watershed are developing or have developed some of their own applications or other ways to report things, and we want to try and be compatible with and support those and not replace them. So, I think that's an area for exploration, but we haven't gotten into the details yet.
That's wonderful. I would love to see how we can coordinate on that to make sure that the neighbors know where to send reports. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Pui. Looks like that's it. Thanks, Soren, for your stewardship of the river. Thanks for being here with us today.
My pleasure.
It's good to see you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to also thank Soren. I've been following the Jordan River group for a long time, and you've come so far since, you know, the last time I was involved with getting to the river and stuff a few years ago. So, I'm very proud of the work, Soren, and I think it gives, it gives me like more motivation and encouragement to continue to support like the Jordan River in general because of the amount of work and the amount of people involved and how the rest of the state or all these municipalities are also involved. And I think it's thanks to you and all that effort. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, councilmembers, we are moving on to item number six, which is the last full item on our agenda. It is another informational briefing. This is about the North Temple Economic Revitalization Action Plan. And we have Lorena Riffo Jensen from the, oh, looks like we have Roberta and Jacob, actually.
Sorry.
No, no Lorena, but hi Lorena. I think you're up. Go ahead. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for having us. So, we are really just here to let you know that we have received a grant from the Wasatch Front Regional Council to look into a plan. The name is subject to change. It's a lot of words, but we, our ultimate goal is to tap into all of the brain power that's gone into North Temple through various plans and extract out all of the meaningful insights that economic development can put to use. So, a few things that we're hearing from our partners in this area is that North Temple seems to lack a unified economic vision. Several plans for the area exist but are not economic development plans. They may have some economic development parts, but some of these, or most of these plans are outdated. And then we're also hearing about safety concerns and blight on North Temple, and this has been an ongoing concern expressed by businesses. About this grant, we applied for this grant with the Wasatch Front Regional Council. We received $170,000 to be matched with $20,000 from the city. And we, depending on our budget this year, we will likely begin the RFP for this consultant July 1st. We will hire a consultant to do this work and, which would include the community engagement and the completion of this plan. And the area we plan to address on North Temple is between I-15 and I-215. A few scope of work items that we're looking at, there's a community and business engagement to assess the community goals. This is critical, and it may limit our ability to speak to what will be coming out of this plan because this is obviously yet to happen. We want to do an asset and gap analysis of economic opportunities and activation opportunities for this area. And as I mentioned before, we have several plans that exist but are about to expire or have already expired. So, we really want this consultant to be able to extract out any still-relevant insights from those plans and put them together for a path forward for DED. And I would also like to mention that the RDA will be a critical partner in this as well. And at the end, we hope to produce an action plan for DED and the RDA. And then, just a, an update on some of the things we're doing right now. We are engaging with NeighborWorks to pilot some activation here in North Temple. Right now, we're working with Public Lands and NeighborWorks to bring together a coalition of partners, and we do have a few events coming up. Mid-June, we, in conjunction with the international market, we hope to have one to two movies for families and adults. And then we are looking at other opportunities for September. So, that's a very quick summary of what we're hoping to accomplish, but we expect a few questions if you have any.
Great. Thanks for that. So, just to summarize, this is a WFRC grant to look at economic development activities along North Temple. The city's match was 20,000, and we're hoping to, and that would be, that 20,000 would be in this upcoming budget? And is that why you're saying you need to wait till January 1st?
July 1st.
Sorry, July 1st, that's what I mean.
Yep.
Because that city's match needs to be budgeted, or that's just...
It's Plan A, but we have a Plan B.
What's that?
It's, that's Plan A. We hope to pay for it through the budget, and if it's approved, then we will. And if not, we have a Plan B.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. But I guess the question, well, anyway, we can, give it to those, Councilmember Valdemir.
Thank you. The money that you requested, it says that it's going to be for, hold on, community and business engagement, but will that study also produce the Economic Revitalization Action Plan as well? So, will we have both, or is it just the wishes and desires of the community?
It will have, so, the plan needs to be informed by the wishes and desires of the community, both residents and businesses. And with that, that helps us to inform what else to provide in the plan.
Okay. But, sorry, so, we're not going to have like an action plan ready with that money? Is that...
Oh, no, we will.
Oh, we will?
That's the finished product.
Okay. Perfect. That's what I wanted to know. Great. Good stuff.
Is there a parallel either within our city or something that we might recognize of what like an economic development action plan looks like and like how that, what that results in?
So, I'm holding here an economic, or a North Temple Corridor Economic Revitalization Plan. And this was a consortium with NeighborWorks, some of the divisions within the city, and it is very outdated. It was completed in 2005, but there's a wealth of information in here. So, if that's something that you would like to come to understand...
That's an old plan.
It is an old plan.
I see.
Yep.
Yeah.
So...
Well, and what was the result of that plan and where did it fall short and what are we going to hopefully get from this new plan? Maybe that's too big of a question?
I think it is, yeah. The, there are four plans that I highlighted. Let's see, let's go back one slide. So, Thriving Place will have some insights that we want to implement here. The West Side Master Plan also has, it touches North Temple. The North Temple Boulevard Plan was completed in 2010, and a lot of infrastructure improvements came out of that. And then, this is the North Temple Revitalization Action Plan. So, from all of these plans...
The one that you are holding is this number four?
That's right.
Okay.
From all of these plans, contains great information. We hope to combine all of those. The difference is that economic development is a relatively new organization. We've only been in existence for six years, and because many of these plans were created a long time ago, we need to kind of identify our place in all of these efforts.
Understood. Councilmember Pietro and then Councilmember Pui.
What's the geography of the portion of North Temple that we're talking about? Especially because I love how much RDA attention we get up to Redwood Road, but we're seeing at the 1950 West Track stop, an intense amount of housing, particularly low, affordable or deeply affordable, with zero amenities to go with it, no grocery stores, nothing, no proximate jobs, things like that. And then we know that on the other side of I-15, you know, the best place to eat in Salt Lake City is there and others. And so, how far is this going to go? And then, how pivotal is RDA? Because you know I've been beating this drum for forever. I don't think on any RDA projects, we should be doing ground floor commercial without consulting what the actual economic forces need. This idea of like building a space that we hope someone can afford and use feels like a really backwards way for me to be doing RDA ground floor. And so, the marriage of you two is like thrilling my soul. So, I would love to know the geography and then the intertwining of RDA and you.
Yep. Right now, in our grant application, we propose between I-15 and I-215, but I don't think that we're tied to that. And then with the RDA, they have their commercial assistance programs that they're waiting for approval on, but those would be economic development tools. And those include the commercial loans, adaptive reuse program, and tenant assistance. And so, we hope that the insights captured in this plan can kind of help inform how best to use those to assist existing businesses that are here.
Can I, oh, I just say, real quick, also, we've been working with transportation quite a bit on this, and they were very supportive of this grant, and that's specifically why we picked between those, between the two interstates because it complements the work they're doing on the mobility hub, and we don't want that to go by the wayside. This will actually keep, kind of keep that momentum going. But like Jake said, it's not completely tied, but we just thought since sort of, we have to take like a, we can't, we can't map the world, and so we have to, like, this is probably the best chunk of land to focus on. Obviously, and the big news with, this will be complementary to what's happening in Rocky Mountain Power. It actually will be really crucial. I think the timing of this grant is really crucial to what, to might inform or complement or, you know, not complement what's going on in Rocky Mountain Power. So, I think it's important for the city to really have a good, solid plan in place before a lot of that stuff happens. While we do, some of it's breaking ground, but a lot of it's still TBD, right? And then with the RDA, I will also say that we're, our team has been talking to a lot of the developers, the new developers along Redwood, along North Temple, and understanding kind of what, what, you know, what the barriers might be to create like an active local business, community, walkability, place-making and all of that. And I think between our department, those developers that are interested but might need further tools, so with the RDA tools, those kind of three things together, we can really get something done. So, excited about that.
So, I would like to ask a little bit if this study will maybe give the city advice on zoning, maybe changes regarding the commercial, you know, development that happens on North Temple. Sometimes we see that instead of having ground commercial, they put their gyms, you know, or the leasing office instead of an amenity where you can have a restaurant or a coffee shop or, or something that the community needs on once and on the west side. So, I would, I would like to find out a little more about if this grant will help us with some advice on some of that. And, you know, I've been trying to figure out if we can require some of this to happen in this area, especially on North Temple. The second question, I guess, is, these are questions in general, no questions for you necessarily to ask, to answer right now, but it is regarding the... necessarily to answer right now, but it is regarding the Rocky Mountain Power site and how that could be a catalytic to all of this, and if this study will take that in consideration. If there is a professional baseball stadium being built on basically on North Temple, how is that going to look? If we're going to have hundreds of people coming to buy coffee and buy food and get entertainment on North Temple, which has always been the dream, right? It is the gateway to the city, it's a grand boulevard. And there was a third question, but I don't remember what. Oh, and if this study will look into advice to this council and this city about safety and, you know, what we need to do to make this corridor even more safe for everybody and to attract more people to the sidewalks.
I'm not sure if those are rhetorical questions, but I do think the question about land use and safety is important, because to my understanding, this is not a master plan that would be the groundwork for zoning. But can you explain that, whether or not that's true?
I think any economic development strategy does have a zoning aspect to it. So certainly, there could be a recommendation from that, that hopefully we would work with planning if they're on that. So I don't, we're not entirely certain with everything that can come out of it, but all of the departments are potentially involved in what this would look like.
And I think related to that, is this a plan that similar, and it's not a master plan, it's not a land use master plan, but similar to that, that the council adopts at the end? Or is it just like a study that gets released and is it codified? What's the result of this legally, I guess?
It's a good question. Something to consider.
So, okay, Councilmember... Councilmember Petro. Valdemotos and Petro.
I think, yeah, something to consider. And I think there have been many, many efforts, me being involved in some of them in the past, with some of the community members, like Bill Coker here, Freddie Guana, where we worked with NeighborWorks a few years ago to have a marketing plan, and that's why you see the Note District Art that has happened. That was an action plan. It was a marketing plan to market North Temple. So I think what I would like to see in this plan, it might not be something that we implement, but for sure definite actions and maybe some numbers in there that the council could consider in the future, whereas the funding comes from the RDA or comes from Salt Lake City Economic Development or the city in general, that would be really helpful, because I think the community already has a good idea of what they want or what they want to see. And I think it's just tweaking here and there and almost like having this plan that reviews what's happened. It might not be as different than what we dreamed about, and then finally have some action items that the council, the RDA board, whoever can act on. So it's not like, you know, but it's something like, oh, okay, next year, we want to really explore the SAA idea that we had at some point in the past, but it fell through because, you know, it just didn't happen. But maybe, you know, people have changed, property owners have changed their minds, and maybe we can do the SAA so we have a nicer landscaped, you know, corridor or whatever. But I would like to see that, because I don't think we had that. We had bits and pieces here and there, but I'm excited because it will be more like definite. These are the 10 things that we can do. So, thanks.
Councilmember Petro.
Capitalizing on something Councilmember Pui pointed out, well, if we get the MLB, we can be absolutely 1,000% confident that we will experience a business-level gentrification, where this land suddenly becomes in demand by people who previously couldn't find it with a GPS. Even if we don't get the MLB, we know that the Spark Project, we know that the Fair Park Master Plan coming to pass will create a demand and an attractiveness to this place that isn't here. And I would love to see as part of this plan, a proactive assumption that the displacement of any people who have been perennially invested here would face any sort of displacement, a defensiveness for our businesses here, including Nico's Taco Stand here, Star of India, Sutherland's Hardware, the people who have been here and made this place beautiful. The goal of this is for the things that make the west side amazing, to those of us who haven't believed the stigma about North Temple, those should be preserved and able to thrive and reach greater viability and create a uniquely west-side experience to the economic development. The caving into out-of-state developers who might see a major league franchise come in cannot be given carte blanche to run roughshod.
Yep.
Appreciate that. One question I had related to the geographic boundaries. So we keep asking, like, what is this not? It's not a master. But regardless of what the study areas, this is not like an RDA area where if there's a great strategy and then there's a business that wants to utilize one of those strategies just west of 215, it's not like, once we set the boundaries, that strategy can only be used in that area. Am I... It's like, that may be where you're focusing on, but really, it's an area-wide thing. Or it doesn't, it's not like a business a half a block north of North Temple is unqualified for whatever Health Department of Economic Development would propose. Is that true? Hi Lorena.
Hi. I think all your questions have been incredible and really appreciate the work the team has done. I think any economic development plan will have actions. So getting back to Councilwoman, Councilmember Valdemotos, it will have some action items in there. We're working closely with the RDA. In fact, as part in preparation to meet with you today, Jake spoke with and connected with Danny to ensure that whatever they do, whatever we're doing, they'll be sitting at the table. But you're absolutely, absolutely right, this is not an RDA project area. But there is already one, and if we can incorporate what's there with expansion of all the business that we're looking at, I think it will benefit greatly this community. And we have had conversations with the community, because this needs to be driven, as Councilmember Petro, as well as Councilmember Pui have discussed, by the community. We're here to create that economic goals and objectives, but their voice will be part of this.
Great, I appreciate that, because understanding that the redevelopment agency in the city have slightly different funding tools...
Yes, absolutely.
Whatever, I do think that, at least, and for me, I would love for this to help inform some of the things we do in the RDA, like the West Side Community Initiative. What exactly does that mean, and where does it go? And is there an economic development piece of that? So understanding that it is not that, I'm happy to hear that you're working in conjunction with the RDA, because it seems like that is a natural marriage.
And absolutely. And in fact, other departments will have a lot to do with this. I think we mentioned earlier, transportation. So absolutely will be included.
And I'll just, I have, for a long time, thought that this North Temple corridor is one of the most under-capitalized assets in our city, and we have so much potential here.
Oh, yes, we do.
But what other councilmembers have brought up is super important, that we don't capital, we don't create, we don't realize the potential at the expense of who's already been here. So a lot of these, this is all a great conversation, and I'm very excited about this plan to help us realize the potential of this neighborhood.
And thank you so much for giving us an opportunity.
Thank you for being here.
I just want to say that the administration has been pushing economic development immensely to find ways to develop a strategy for economic development. So this is right on target, and Jake wrote the grant, so he was the right person to speak to you today.
Appreciate your being here. Okay, councilmembers, that brings us to the end of our, well, we have reported chair and vice chair. Vice Chair Petro, do you have anything? Okay, I don't have anything. Executive Director Cindy Gus Jensen, no. So this will then conclude our work session. We are going to be taking a break. We'll be back in this room at 7:00 PM for our formal meeting. But in the meantime, we have dinner and entertainment in the Zion Building, Zion Room, which is across the grass over there. So please join us over there. I believe there are, if you're here, there are, I think there are tickets for free dinner, so please join us for the food and entertainment, and then come back here for our formal meeting. Councilmember Petro will be chairing the formal meeting tonight.
I promise I'm on it already, Katie. I'm on it.
We are adjourned with work session. Thank you.